The New Britain Board of Education, providing students with a high-quality education.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the January 4th, 2021 Board of Education meeting. And let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And, uh, Reyes, you want to lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just for all.
Agenda slid off the button table. All right, so can we start with the rule call?
Mr. Merrill Gay.
Here.
Mr. Nicholas Mercier.
Here.
Dr. Violet Jimenez-kins.
Here.
Ms. Monica Darls.
Here.
Mr. Anthony Kane.
Here.
Mr. Joseph Lestro.
Here.
Ms. Annie Parker.
Here.
Ms. Diana Reyes.
Here.
Ms. Gail Sanders-Powell.
Here.
Okay. And now we'll have a moment of meditation, and I ask that you keep in your thoughts the family of Stephen Horowitz, who used to be the president of this board, who passed away from cancer this past month. Okay, and do we have anybody who signed up for participation? Two phone numbers. Okay, test my vision here. Uh, we have two people on the phone. I don't know if they are people who would like to participate in public participation. I see eight-six-oh, and then a number that ends in four-seven. If you want to hit star six to unmute yourself and let us know whether you're calling in to do public participation. If you're on the phone, called in, and your last four, last two digits are four-seven, and you'd like to speak, please hit star six and let you know that, let us know what you'd like to say.
No, thank you, just listening.
Okay, all right. So I don't see anybody else who is here for public participation. So we will move directly into executive session to discuss some matters related to the Chamberlain School construction project.
Motion to go into executive session for discussion of pending legal matters related to the Chamberlain School construction project with the board. Mr. Kevin Kane, Superintendent Sarah will be joining us remotely, and I believe Mr. Dion may be joining us remotely.
And attorney.
And attorney Mikhail.
Second.
All right.
Hi.
All right, and we will be back in. We are back at six forty-one. And now we will do reading superintendent's report, just accepting it in writing, or are you going to speak from the screen? We can't hear you.
That's because I'm on mute. Sorry, I've got to get used to this. Uh, I can just do a really quick overview. I did, a couple of board members had asked about why we went to remote learning. So I did put the rationale. Um, you can see it was more of a staffing issue than it is anything around the health and safety. Our transmission rate in the building is still very low, but we were down considerable numbers of teaching staff after Thanksgiving, and we anticipated that same following this break. So the two weeks, although not optimal for our families, provides consistency where most of our staff can telework, um, most of our teachers. And so it's uninterrupted learning for the students with their teacher. So, um, other questions, feel free to ask me. Um, our vaccination clinic will be starting this coming Friday. Um, it will, it will be on Wednesdays, but because this Wednesday is a holiday, they moved it to Friday. I gave some details for you there. Um, you know, we're hopeful that the teaching staff and the school staff will be, will be here within a few weeks, but we do have, uh, there will be another senior center in New Britain, as well as New Britain High School Auditorium. Uh, it will be by appointment only, and so we're getting together our staff list now for the Department of Health, our local one. Um, and the next is, um, a rationale that you'll see later on with Kevin's budget presentation, that we're asking for, um, two positions for our Bridges program, which is a, um, it's a part of our continuum for, for a population of students. And we're modeling an after the success we found with the New Britain Transition Center as our small classroom setting, which is a regular initiative. Um, and the structures, the infrastructure we put in place to support the earners and the staff in that department. And so I just wanted to give you a history over the last year or two years of how NBDTC, since we restructured, has been doing, as well as, um, this is here too now for our small class setting at Lincoln, and we have a middle school model as well. But, um, just so, but later when we do get to the, to the budget presentation that Kevin's been giving, uh, you'll have these notes, and we can speak to those around the need for some supervis and guidance for our staff in the Bridges program in K-12. And then, and that was basically what I wanted you to have for tonight. And that's it. Any questions on it?
Any questions, anybody? Okay, I think we can move on to our next item. Meeting reports. Finance, do you have anything?
Finance did not meet.
And personnel?
Personnel did not meet.
Curriculum?
Curriculum met on December twenty-first, and, um, we accepted our monthly advanced report. Um, and then we got a presentation by, uh, Mr. Billy and Mr. Kelvin from the high school on new courses that they are proposing for New Britain High School. Health and Wellness II, Elementary Algebra, which receives the credit for TUMSIS Math 095, which is a sort of remedial course that, um, many students have to take when they, when they go to TUMSIS before they do work to higher maths. Um, and a problem-solving, um, course, now that there's more flexibility per the state in the curriculum than in math. Um, and then we just discussed purchase orders for, um, a bunch of different of, of the online platforms that are being used now, um, you know, through all the virtual learning.
Okay, and policy?
Uh, policy of discussion around some of our committee work and work of all the subcommittees and how they have been functioning, and just looking to maybe codify or put in policy some of the structures that we've put into place over the last three to four years, just to make sure that they're there going forward. Um, we talked about curriculum and policy and some of the things that we've done. I need to still reach out to the chairs of finance and of personnel to sort of get feedback in drafting sort of a policy that talks about what, what are the duties and roles of each committee, what business goes before them. And the hope is that that will serve as somewhat of a guide for cabinet when they're trying to determine what things go to what committees, because I think they've gotten it down. I think there's been a lot of good progress on that. Um, but again, just putting that framework in place for future boards, so that the work that we're doing now is not lost when there's turnover around the boards.
Okay, and did Wellness meet?
Wellness has not met.
All right, and any board reports? Okay. See none, let's move on to the presentations. Uh, we'll start with dual language. And who do we have to do the dual language?
Thanks, Mr. Gay. Christina Knedberg will be introducing. Um, she'll be presenting, as well as, um, staff members from, uh, I forgot how to pronounce it. But Christina, I'm going to turn it over to you right now.
Uh, thank you, everyone. Can everyone hear me? Um, it's my pleasure to introduce Phyllis Hardy. Phyllis is the Executive Director for the Multi-State Association for Bilingual Education, which is known as MAVE, uh, for the Northeast Territory. Prior to this position, she worked as an Equity and Diversity Specialist at the Educational Alliance at Brown University, and as a bilingual special educator and bilingual teacher in Fannieham Mass. Phyllis brings her expertise to New Britain and is working closely with our dual-language team at De La Reta. Principal Alex Ortiz, as well as Assistant Principal Lori Butterfield is also in the meeting this evening. And it's my pleasure to introduce Phyllis.
Sorry, I'm, I'm not as comfortable with Google Meet as I am with Zoom, but I will get there. And I have a PowerPoint presentation, so I will share that with you. And, um, I also share this presentation plus other resources in a folder with Christina, and hopefully she will share this, the three resources with you as well, either after the meeting or during the meeting. Okay. Just getting myself ready on my computer. So thank you for inviting me to speak in front of the school board. As Christina mentioned, I'm the Executive Director for MAVE. MAVE is a term that we typically use here in our organization. I want to let you know that MAVE's vision is that bilingualism and multiculturalism are assets that provide cognitive, social, emotional, educational, and employment advantages for all students. Our mission is to identify, promote, and disseminate research-based programs and practices that support bilingualism and multiculturalism for educational success. MAVE offers many services to the schools and districts in the region. We primarily work with schools and districts in Connecticut, Massachusetts, and Rhode Island. There is one dual-language education program in Fort Bend. We hold an annual conference for dual-language and bilingual programs each year, where local practitioners and national specialists share their practices. This year, the local conference is on March nineteen in Columbia. We also run network meetings for dual-language educators, coaches, school and district leaders. We have a network of special educators, and we offer professional development opportunities specific to dual-language programs from our summer institute. I am here in the capacity of MAVE's pre-toting services. Let me see that, I have something wrong here. Let me just check. All right. Okay, this slide shows some of the resources we use. The Guiding Principles for Dual-Language Education and the Program Planner Guide for Implementing New Dual-Language Education Programs are resources co-developed by Liz Howard. Liz is a professor of education at UConn that MAVE works closely with. MAVE also utilizes other resources developed by the Centers for Cyberistics and by Dual-Language Education in Mexico. We develop the guidance for defining and implementing dual-language education programs for the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. In our experience helping schools and districts, we've also developed timelines, readiness, and decision-making tools, some of which I will share with you in this presentation. So what is a dual-language education program? A program for all students that provides literacy and content instruction through two languages. More specifically, dual-language education programs use two languages for literacy and content instruction, provide the same academic content, and address the same content standards as general education programs. It covers instruction over an extended period of time, and I will, I will repeat this numerous times during this presentation. And instruction in the partner language is at least fifty percent of the time. I'm not sure why there's so many highlights in this. Do you see highlights? No, it's just me. The roles of the program or the outcome for students in these programs are grade-level academic achievement, bilingualism and bilinguism, social-cultural competence. And MAVE adds closing the achievement gap and eliminating educational disparities for English learners. You will see why we add this goal when I share with you the research of the effectiveness of this program for English learners. Who is this program for? There continues to be lots of confusion as to who the program is for. I particularly want to make clear that students with disabilities can and do learn in dual-language education programs. In general education, we accept all students, and we provide the services they need to succeed. The same should be true for students in dual-language education programs. The student population based in a dual-language education program determines whether the program is a two-way immersion or one-way immersion program model. As a general rule of thumb, it took, you, we would consider two-way immersion programs as no less than one-third and no more than two-thirds of the student population, that it should be monolingual or dominant in either English or the partner language at the time of enrollment. Because of changing demographics in many communities, we also have students who are already bilingual, proficient to some degree in both languages. The three buckets represent the three different student populations in a two-way immersion program. One-way immersion program serves linguistically homogeneous groups of students. Students are either all Spanish speakers, or all bilingual speakers, or all English speakers learning academics in two languages. This slide summarizes the two program models based on student population. A task early in the planning timeline for the dual-language education planning team is to have a clear understanding of the student demographic over time in the community. With deeper analysis of the data, the planning team can then present to the school board their recommendation of whether to open a two-way immersion or one-way immersion program at the De La Reta school, and how their analysis of demographic data supports this decision. How will the balance of Spanish speakers at the school and throughout the district impact implementation and placement in a dual-language program? Let me share some examples of demographic data shared with me that begins to answer this question. One of your leaders shared that sixty-five percent of the student population in New Britain are Hispanic. This data point shows that there may be a high percentage of students who are native or heritage speakers of Spanish or bilingual, and thus warrant consideration of a one-way immersion program for a linguistically homogeneous group of students. We will have to go deeper into the data to know the percentage of Hispanic students in the district who speak Spanish or who are bilingual. As another recent planning team meeting, leadership shared that the percentages of English learners at the De La Reta school were decreasing over the past several years. The team should review additional data for wider it has been this decrease in English learners at the school. Based on this early data, we know that there are speakers dominant in English at the De La Reta school. We will need to understand how many of the English learners speak Spanish or are bilingual. And based on what we learned, a two-way version model may be the recommendation for the heterogeneous student population currently at the De La Reta school. The Bilingual Continuum is a tool developed by the Wyndham Public School here in Connecticut, and now used by most districts in the region. It is a tool to be used with hands at the time of enrollment to help a district and school balance placement of the different types of student populations. There are other decisions that will be made about the dual-language program in your district. In program design, a decision, a decision will be made whether to instruct the students in both English and Spanish beginning at kindergarten, or to begin with Spanish in kindergarten and then add English instruction by grade three. The visuals in red and green, the fifty-fifty and eighty-twenty design options that most dual-language education programs adhere to. Another decision to make is whether to begin literacy instruction in one language, and then later introduce literacy in the second language, or introduce literacy instruction in kindergarten in the two languages simultaneously. Decisions on language allocation or the language of instruction will determine who teaches in Spanish or in English, what languages are needed of the support staff, how much time in the day is taught in English or Spanish, and what subject is taught in English or Spanish for each grade. For example, some programs alternate the teaching of Spanish, of teaching of science and social studies in the two, in the two languages. Science is taught in one grade in English, and social studies, studies is taught in Spanish. But the next grade, the opposite occurs. Science is taught in, in Spanish, and social studies is taught in English. This decision makes sure that over the two grades, students are exposed to the content of science and social studies in the program's two languages. These language allocation decisions impact the development of curriculum and purchasing of teaching materials for the program. An inventory, a bilingual staff, will help determine whether your program will have groups of students taught by one bilingual teacher or by two partner teachers, one who teaches in Spanish and the other who teaches in English. So let's take a look at what research tells us. This graph depicts the research by Thomas and Collier of English learners in the different programs, ESL or TSAL, Transitional Bilingual Education, and Dual-Language Education. The solid lines represent English learners. The dotted line at the fiftieth percentile represents the average performance of native English speakers on the English reading test at each grade level. In all the program types, English learners appear to do well in terms of gap closure during their early grades. When beginning English learners are followed across time, comparing their achievement as tested in English by the program type, you see differences among student groups are quite small initially in the early grades of schooling, K through three. Differences in average student performance become significantly larger in middle school, grade six through eight, depending on the program model experienced through the elementary school years. And differences in average student performance are very large in high school, again, depending on the program model experienced through the elementary school years. Only long-term, well-implemented dual-language education programs allow English learners to score as high or higher than typical native English speakers after six to eight years when tested on English reading. Only long-term, well-implemented dual-language education programs eventually close all the achievement gap. We have research that compares students in dual-language programs and to students who are in Transitional Bilingual Program. And Transitional Bilingual Program is a common program in Connecticut. And this, and the researchers here, they're finding that dual-language education is superior to Transitional Bilingual Program on measures of academic achievement in English and in the native language. And these students outperform their, their, other English learners when they're in English-only or Transitional Bilingual Programs. We have research from Thomas Collier, Thomas and Collier in the state of North Carolina. North Carolina is a state with a statewide policy to implement dual-language education programs. They have hundreds, hundreds of programs in their state. Their research compares students in dual-language education programs to students in English programs, such as TSAL or Sheldon English Emergence, other common programs in, like, other common programs in Connecticut. And these studies are telling us that when there's an English learner in a dual-language program compared to not in a dual-language program, they score significantly higher on state tests as well as long reference tests. And they master more the curriculum academically and linguistically than English learners in English-only programs and experience full academic gap closure. We also have research that looks at outcomes of English learners that's important to state and federal school accountability measures. On reclassification, for example, English learners attain English proficiency by grade five to seven. On academic achievement, English learners reach comparatively similar or higher level of content area academic achievement when they're in a program versus not in a program. And on other indicators such as completing high schools, taking advanced placement courses, and having positive attitudes for school, English learners are more likely to have success. The most recent study in 2017 validates over thirty years of research. This is research in Portland, Oregon. Dual-language education programs show positive academic gains and language proficiency gains for all students, for English learners, for native speakers of the target language, and for English speakers. I want to point out the last reference on this slide. The research from the previous slide mentioned that English learners attain English proficiency by, by grade five to seven. This research is even more specific. The findings states how English learners in dual-language programs, for example, English learners who speak Spanish in a Spanish-English dual-language program, have a fourteen-point higher rate of becoming English proficient by grade six. There are many long-term English learners languaging in our schools. A dual-language education program can eliminate the concept of a, of a long-term English learner. And dual-language education programs are an additive program in that they add another language and culture to what students bring with them. Latinx and English learners gain high-quality English while maintaining and professing their first language and affirming their cultural heritage. And for English speakers, they gain a second language in cross-cultural respect and understanding. As Thomas and Collier found, the bilingual-bicultural context of a well-implemented dual-language program nurtures everyone. The benefits for families include recognizing the resources families bring by exchanging skills, by becoming partners and advocating for the program, and through stronger homeschool connections for those who have not often felt welcome to school. Planning for a dual-language program takes time, anywhere from one to three years. All stakeholders should be educated about what is a dual-language education program. Equally important is for stakeholders to understand the motivation for implementing the program. Both tasks fall under implementation of a district's and school communication plan. Fortunately, there's already an established district's school leadership dual-language education team. Recently, they realized that their team needs representatives from additional community members, such as parents and the school board themselves. The district and school leadership planning team will turn its attention to determining if a necessary foundation is in place to support a dual-language education program. An action plan will be developed for decisions at the district level. I just learned that you have a senior Equity and Talent Officer who already has been addressing issues of equity, an example of the necessary foundation in place. Earlier, I mentioned reviewing demographic data. Other data and other needs to review includes achievement data, mobility data, current program evaluation data, staffing needs, professional development needs, and possible revisions to existing policies that may impact this new program. The district's school leadership team, with a dual-language education team, along with identified kindergarten and grade one staff, who will roll out the program, will participate in a retreat to review the program elements and gain a deeper understanding of the program implementation decisions to make. The outcome of the retreat is an action plan for program implementation at the school level. MAVE will continue to provide technical support and professional development throughout the planning process. In the Guiding Principles for Dual-Language Education, the exemplary practice of program implementation is when there is strong district, district... In the guiding principles for dual-language education, exemplary practice of program implementation is when there is strong district support for the program. This is demonstrated by structural and functional integration of the program into the school system. For example, do the district goals include motivation for implementing a dual-language education program? Is the district's assessment system prepared to monitor student growth in the partner language in addition to the state requirements of monitoring growth in English? By long-term planning, examples would be planning full implementation until all the grades that currently exist at the DeLoreto School are part of the dual-language education program. And by equitable allocation of resources, examples include considering the impact of school choice policy and transportation policy, and by considering initial startup costs such as Spanish curriculum materials and for professional development for staff to be on board with a dual-language education program. MAB has been paying close attention to district readiness for implementing new dual-language education programs. We have learned how important it is for the school board to share a core belief that for all students, including students with disability, the following principles apply. Language is a resource. Learning in students' first language affirms their cultural and linguistic identity. High-quality dual-language education programs necessitate constant commitment. And equity and social justice are the guiding force for closing the academic achievement gap. I read a recent article in the Connecticut Mirror that describes how in Connecticut there's a thirty-plus-point achievement gap difference between English learners and non-English learners in reading and math for students in grades four and five. What's the achievement gap in New Britain? The district readiness tool acknowledges the journey district leadership will engage in towards a commitment to dual-language education, to sharing a core belief and principles of educational achievement for English learners through equity and social justice, and to eliminating biases inherent in our schools that affect linguistically and culturally diverse students with or without disabilities. Where does the New Britain School Board fall in this journey? I have shared the complete district readiness tool with your leaders and hope you will have a chance to review the tool. The tool references other examples of structural and functional integration of the program into the school system of long-term planning and of equitable allocation of these resources. In addition, you also have the timeline that MAB has revised to reflect the many decisions that this district and the school will need to make as they plan a new program. And I will end here by taking any questions, comments from anyone in the audience.
Sorry. I just have a quick question. So you'll have to forgive me. DeLoreto, since I can remember, has been a magnet school dual-language.
It hasn't been dual since Kelp got here.
Okay, so that's when it went away. So this group is brought in to reinstitute dual-language and really do it how we're supposed to do it. Okay, I'm good.
How are the children that are currently in the school, are they going to automatically be enrolled into the program? Or are all new groups going to be chosen? And how will that happen?
Can you hear that?
Sure. You want me to answer that or Alex would you like to answer that?
It could be your, I will say.
Okay. So the plan right now, and this is very common, is to create a strand within the school. So let's say you have four kindergarten classrooms, two of the classrooms will be part of the dual-language program, and two will stay with the current program that exists in the school. And that's very common to start as a strand within a school. And what usually happens is over time, eventually, ideally, you'd want the whole school to be dual-language, but a dual-language program. But that takes time to get there, especially when you're starting again. So you would start kindergarten, first grade would be the first two grades that would be to get started with. And because it's kindergarten, you're having new students coming into your school. So this is why I said policies around school choice and transportation and the fact that it's a magnet school will have to be addressed because now people are entering not just because it's a magnet school, but because there's also a dual-language strand within this magnet school. I hope that answers your question.
Any other question?
Somebody has a hand up, Mark, I think, or...
Yeah, Mr. Spalding, did you intentionally have your hand up or was that by accident?
I'm sorry, I know it's by accident.
Okay.
It's right near the mute button, I understand.
Any other questions about development of the dual-language program at DeLoreto?
Actually, I have one more.
Okay, go ahead.
Are all the teachers going to have to be certified in dual languages?
So your state has a license for bilingual teachers. And if you are teaching in the Spanish, you're planning to open again a Spanish program because Spanish-English program because that's your student demographics. The teachers who teach in Spanish, all academics, should have their dual-language license or show evidence that they are proficient speakers of Spanish. So your license in your state would require your teachers to have the qualifications to work in this program.
And can I add something? Currently, right now, we have fifteen teachers in the district with a nine-zero-two bilingual elementary certification. And we also have seventeen teachers who have the zero-zero-nine bilingual pre-K twelve certification. So we're looking at staff across the district as well as staff that are currently teaching at DeLoreto.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. That was very informative. As a parent of a former DeLoreto dual-language kid, you didn't have to persuade me. Okay, so let's move on to our next presentation. The next one is the CLIME Hire Students and Compensation by Mark.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. So as you're aware, CLIME Hire and CLIME is our transitional program for students eighteen to twenty-two in the district. And it really is a gem in our district. It provides an opportunity for high-needs students to meet those transitional services from the world of work to the world of work and to academics. And we are fortunate as a district to have a partnership with CCSU. We're one of a few districts in the entire state of Connecticut that has such a partnership. And it really provides our kids an opportunity to get a foothold into a post-secondary academic opportunity. Many of those kids work in our community. So they work at places such as Will, Storybrothers, Auto Body, Avery Soda, Marshalls, TJ Maxx, Savers, Wixons, just to name a few. Because of SSI restrictions, our students are able to only earn up to, students are only able to earn up to $7,000, $7,770 per year without affecting their SSI benefits. We currently are paying our students $3 an hour. So these employers we partner with, they're not actually paying them. The district is paying these students. And these kids work really hard. They really do. They're engaged. They're dedicated. And many of our employers actually hire our students once they graduate. But as you can see, we're only paying them $3. And if we were to pay them, I'm proposing, and I'm asking the board to approve an increase from $3 an hour to $6 an hour, which would bring the annual payout from around $2,100 now to around $4,300, which is still far below the $7,700 threshold that these kids are allowed to make. And as you can see, I've provided you a comparison of some of the other programs and other districts around our region who are what they're paying. So for instance, Project Genesis, which is in Manchester, they're a private program. And we do have some students there. We have students in all the private programs that I've listed. They're paying them $3 an hour. Region thirteen, which is Durham, they're affiliated with Middlesex Transitional Academy. They're paying their students $4 an hour. Farmington Valley Schools, which includes Farmington and Avon, and they are collaborating with University of Hartford, pay their students a $60 monthly stipend. Locally closer to home, Futures, which is right over the line in West Hartford, and we have students there, they're paying $9 an hour. And Ava Brook, which is a private program, and we have students there, will be paying their students $10. I'm requesting, and I brought this up to the superintendent cabinet, requesting the board to authorize us to increase the pay from $3 to $6 now for our students. Currently, we have thirty-two students in CLIME, and we're averaging right now costing the district about $30,000 a year to support those students. So this would be an increase about double. Some of that money does come from the IDA grant, but most of it does come from local. And so we require your approval to increase that to $6 from the current rates. Does anyone have any questions? If you have also, I have a couple of, I have teachers from CLIME here. If you have any questions specific to the program or anything, but again, I'm requesting an increase from $3 to $6. We would urge you to do that. Again, these kids, they're very dedicated. They attend school. Even in the pandemic, they've been attending. They have some of the best attendance in the district, and they work very, very hard. And the feedback that we see from our community partners is very positive. And when we're talking about equity, I think it really, it goes to the heart of that. I mean, we start kids are coming, any of these kids come from disadvantaged families, and this would really be a help to those families as well.
So was any of the additional funds coming from the IDA grant? Or we would have to come up with the $30,000?
Correct.
That was an either-or question.
It was an either-or. Are they going to give us any additional? Right.
Additional, there wouldn't be additional money from the grant because grants dollars are accounted for for the next year. Some of it does come from the grant, but most of it, the district, most of it comes from local right now. I don't have the exact breakdown as you get that far. But the increase would be coming from local.
Right. The $30,000 would come from local. So we'll take it from Kevin's salary. No, because I'm all for it. I just need to know where it's coming.
How long has it been since it was last raised?
So it was $2 up until seventeen. I don't know. It was from fifteen to seventeen, it was $2. And it's been $3 since the seventeen eighteen school year. So in seventeen eighteen, we spent around $27,000. Eighteen nineteen, we spent $30,000. Last year was less because it was only seven months. So it was like $26,000 last year. And this year, to date right now, we're around $12,000.
I'm right behind you now.
Yeah, okay.
Are you asking for this increase for the remainder of this year? Or is this an increase request for starting next school year?
This will be for next year.
Okay, so starting next fiscal year, so this would be part of our broader budget discussions for the next fiscal and school year. Okay, thank you.
That is correct, yeah.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Let's move on to Kevin in the budget presentation.
Can we actually move his presentation to where we're actually discussing the budget and the agenda under New Business just so we can get a short, however short it is, break from presentations? Nothing personal, Kevin.
All right, works for me. So we will move that presentation to the end of New Business?
It's actually the beginning of New Business. It's really a short break.
Okay, yes, I see.
I was just going to say, what is like a one-minute vote on the consent agenda?
Okay, so we have Old Business Policy Committee?
Motion to approve, the policy committee moves that we approve the revised policy six-one-four-one, which is our curriculum development policy.
Second.
Any discussion?
This came before the board last month. I'm not sure if people had a chance to look through it at length, but it is just revising our curriculum process. We actually sort of, with the new curriculum ideas that came forward at the last curriculum meeting, we sort of test drove the policy, as it were. Seems to be very, you know, seems to be nice to actually have some guidelines so that the staff knows the process, so.
Could you highlight, I'm sorry, I don't remember reading it the first time. Like just highlight the difference.
The main difference is this outlines, first off, there were significant differences, changes to the first three paragraphs. We looked through the language. A lot of it was very antiquated and wasn't really in line with the district's mission and vision. So we revised the language in the first few paragraphs to better align with the district's mission and vision. And then the other thing that was lacking was what is the actual process for approving revised curricula and new curricula? So we laid out a actual process where new courses first will come before just the curriculum committee sort of for discussion and tacit approval. And then that would, with the curriculum committee's approval, they could be added to the program of studies and the further curriculum, like the full curriculum could be developed. And it would, within a year, they'd have to bring it back to the board for a full approval of the completed curriculum. And it just avoided us having sort of this nebulous process that's existed where we don't really, like there was a hesitance to bring curriculums forward because to put all that time of effort into it before getting it approved, but at the same time, the board doesn't want to approve something that hasn't been developed. So the entire section for the review process and approval process is new. And it kind of just outlines sort of the practice that we have been sort of using in absence of a policy. If that answers your question.
Okay. Any further discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Consent agenda is before you. There are items A through L. Does anybody feel the need to take something off the consent agenda?
Sorry, I was on New Business. No, I'm good.
Okay. Without objections, the consent agenda is approved, and we move to New Business.
Such a good break.
My brain needed it, sorry.
Okay.
Motion to submit the superintendent's budget request for fiscal year 2021 and 2022 to the Board of Finance and Taxation, Mayor's Office, and Common Council.
Second.
All right, so let's hear our presentation about this.
Okay, I'll try to be quick. If the superintendent wants to interrupt during a presentation, please do so.
Are we using the colored version or the...
It's the colored version, yeah. So Kristin, if you can close the presentation if I appreciate it. If I'm not loud enough, please just, I'll try to be loud. If I'm not loud enough, please just, I'll try to be louder. You know, one thing with the, with the budget, it's, you know, for members that have been here and new members coming in, we're really, it's really a two-part process here in New Britain. Most communities, we're a little different, our rules are slightly different in most communities. Most communities do bring their budgets forward. Usually the budgets go to a budget-making authority, like, you know, City of New Britain has the Board of Finance, which is a budget-making authority. That's something that's required by state statutes. Most Board of Finances are, is an elected board. New Britain's Board of Finance is, is an appointed board by the mayor. It's a strong mayor's position. So our process is actually, we file the city's ordinance or charter that basically says we need to get our budget to the mayor's office by a certain date. It's usually the second Friday in January. But the Friday in January falls before, I think, the ninth or the 10th, it becomes the third Friday. So this year, our budget has to be in front of them by the 15th, which is later than most years. Once we forward, once your board forwards a budget onto the city, we later on get invited by the Board of Finance, superintendent, board members, myself. It's just question back and forth, and, you know, to be perfectly honest with you, every year when our budget gets forwarded to the Board of Finance, it goes back to the mayor's office as a zero. So we're always, you know, we, nothing's ever been pushed forward to say, you know, give them a million dollars, give them a hundred thousand dollars, give them anything. It's up to the mayor at that time to take the budget and possibly increase our budget or give us something. One thing with any municipality and Board of Education, we're a line item budget. Now, one thing you always hear on the city side, that, you know, we can't tell you how to spend, and you can't. But we're more than a line item budget because your board is really the budget-making authority. It's not, it's not, it's a, it's a line item budget, it's not one line. On the city side, it shows one line. So I'm, you know, if for, if the Common Council or the mayor decides to increase our budget, they increase the line item. You as a board will decide how to spend that extra dollars. Now, on the city side or town side, when they decide to reduce a budget, the council or somebody, or the budget-making authority, the Board of Finance, has to basically say, you know, we're eliminating this position, we're eliminating that. That's, that's up to your discretion how things change. Most communities, actually, it goes to referendum, and their referendum's usually somewhere around May 1st, and it gets voted. Here in New Britain, it doesn't go to referendum, it goes back to the mayor, makes a decision, and usually the Common Council will approve a budget. When I first got here, it used to be like mid-June or whatever, or early, the last couple of years, it's been a little sooner, which is nice. At that point in time, we're working on the budget one more time, because we're looking at our numbers and we're actually changing things. If we get better numbers, that's great for us because we can actually do more. And then sometimes we get worse numbers, you know, and sometimes worse numbers might be in health insurance. We're gonna be fine with that, but in some years, you know, we would, our health consultant might say it's a 2% increase, and we come to, you know, April, May, they come and say it's 12%, which is, which is great because we didn't budget for that. So we're always redoing our budget. So we're a two-part process. Tonight, you're gonna see a budget in front of you. Superintendent's requested a recommended budget. You as a board need to act tonight or sometime thereafter to forward on a budget to the, to the city. And that's what you have tonight. The budget that you have in your budget book has changed over the holidays. You know, we, there's been some changes. It's gonna be incorporated in the presentation, so we're gonna go right there, next page. The budget in front of you tonight, on the local side, is $127,870, which is a $2.1 million increase, or 1.73%. The changes that have been made since you look at your budget book, we've added 40 new teaching assistants to provide additional support to kindergarten classes. The cost for these positions is approximately $50,417. What we're looking to do here is probably hire people who have a degree, pay them $25 an hour, hopefully some of these people weren't actually being teachers in the school system, we're trying to get a second adult in the classroom for kindergarten. If things go well, that person may actually be supporting both kindergarten and first grade, but we'll see how that goes. So that cost is $50,417. We're also increasing by a new transition supervisor. So the transition center right now is K through 12. The plan is now to make it K through A, and actually send the transition center for the high school level from 9 to 12 to the satellite career academy. And that's what you see in there. Those are the changes up there from what you originally have in your budget book. Next slide. This is really just a slide just telling you the history here in New Britain. You know, if you think about it, we've been flat-funded for the last five years. The increase in front of you tonight is 1.73%. One of the things I always look at is enrollment. I think if you look back 20 years ago in Connecticut, in many educations, enrollment back then, because the bubble was very high. You know, I grew up in New Britain, later I became a finance director in Sinsbury, I moved to Sinsbury. And Sinsbury enrollment back then, when my kids were in school, they finished here in New Britain at the end, was somewhere about 5,000 kids. It might have been 5,200 at its peak. Today, it's probably about 4,000. So the enrollment in the, you know, suburbs has actually decreased quite a bit. And that, that's just the way it's throughout all Connecticut. The problem in the suburban districts, like New Britain, our enrollment has been pretty flat. As an example, in 2014, 15, our enrollment was 10,101. In 1920, it was 10,093. It was a decrease of eight students over that five, six-year period. This year, our enrollment's down. Our enrollment's at 96,28. Now, there's a very good chance, a good portion of those kids are the kids that are being learning from home, they're not in the school system, they may come back. I don't think we lost 465 students. But the enrollment number this year is down just based on COVID-19. You know, one thing too, is you're gonna see up in the budget presentation, our per pupil expenditure rank has improved. And I think everybody's wondering, how did that happen? Really, it's really twofold. We're very fortunate, they changed ECS funding for cities like New Britain. So last year was really the first big year we had, we had an increase of $3.9 million. Now, let's go back to a situation we had a couple of years ago, where our counterpart on the city side actually took the self-insurance fund that was part of education. Part of that process with the city in New Britain is, we got something we never, we got something we should have always had, it was called Special Education Excess Cost Grant. Special Education Excess Cost Grant, you're gonna find out, is when you send a student out in New Britain with special needs, the state actually will pay back a portion of that cost. Those costs are supposed to be flowing directly to Board of Education, in most municipalities they do. The city held that back. So when we were going through that situation a few years ago, along with self-insurance fund, we actually went back after them based on the state statute, the legality, and by the way, everything that the board did two, three years ago, we are getting that. So last year was the first year we got this Special Education Excess Cost. So, so we were 168th in the, in the state, we're 166th. The excess cost really got us to 166. The Alliance helped, but that's not, we still would have been 168 if we didn't have the excess cost. Next slide. Now, this next slide is really nothing to do with tonight, but I just want to bring this to everybody's attention. This is last year, the debt service budget for education versus the city. $4.5 million was being allocated for Board of Education's debt service, which is, you know, your buildings, your Smalley project, hopefully someday the Chamberlain project, Gaffney project. The city's debt service is $27 million. Your, our piece, or your piece, or the students' piece in New Britain is only $4.5 million. You know, we always talk about, Dr. Sims had a good question, I'm not sure I really addressed it well enough a month ago, where she talked about, and it was, it was a great question, about the needs in New Britain. And I mentioned about, we don't have available space. And, and that's true. But, you know, one of the things I think as a board, and also myself, that we need to start putting process in place, not for today, because, you know, we're all gonna be gone in two, four, or five years, it's for the future. Because we need to basically expand our schools, just like the suburbs did. You think about that. You look at Newington, it has, you know, 16 kids in the kindergarten class, and we have 20. They're 20% lower. They have the classrooms. You know, so I always, we always talk about, we don't have the funding to hire teachers. Well, we have no place to put them anyway. We have to basically, it has to be a two-pronged approach. We have to basically, when we start renovating schools, we gotta expand those schools, they have those extra classrooms. Years ago, I was in Sinsbury, Dr. Townsley, who was the superintendent of school, he was upstairs from me, great guy, I had a conversation with him one day. I said, Dr. Joe, I said, you're building a Henry James with all these extra classrooms. And he says, yeah. He goes, because when this need comes, he says, I'm gonna find a teacher and put it in that classroom and drive my enrollment down. We don't have that luxury in New Britain because, if you think about it, we built Gaffney, we had 18 classrooms in Gaffney, when it got renovated, we built 18 classrooms, and then our enrollment was 25 kids in Gaffney. We had problems, we had to take a classroom to make a 19th teacher by moving one of the special programs maybe to Roosevelt. So we have to start looking. You know, one thing recently, our state rep, Robert Sanchez, has, you know, really helped us in New Britain go from a close to 80% reimbursement eligible cost to 95%. Let's think about that. We, we should be spending more money, so we still get reimbursed for 95% of our eligible cost, but we need to build that 10% to 20% additional classrooms. I mean, so, you know, the children in this community get the same treatment that children in the other communities get. We're not gonna correct it tomorrow, but we have to stop making those plans where we can correct it when those, when those funds are here. What's the worst case scenario? You have empty classrooms. You shut the heat, just like at home. You can't afford the heat, what do you do? You have different zones, you shut the heat off, you close the door, and life goes on, and you can use it for storage. But we have to have more classrooms, and even when we look at our future projects, we need to think about that. So one of the things I said down below, nothing that has to be addressed tonight, we really should need to look at doing a facilities needs assessment, which we talked about last year, just before, right when COVID-19 hit us. So I'm gonna leave that for, that's a conversation another day, but we need to do things like that. The next two slides are slides I provided to you last year. A lot of misinformation gets out in New Britain about, you know, the Board of Education, $125 million budget, and, you know, the city supports 53% or 54% of it. And it's kind of a little false, because, yeah, it's true that the Board of Education is a larger percent of the total city budget. But it's fiction that 54% of the taxpayers' money pays for education. Because remember, ECS, not the Alliance ECS, ECS itself, every year, the city receives $72,457,10. That hasn't changed for like the last eight years. That's the number. So when you do the quick and dirty math, you take the 125.7, less the $72 million, the taxpayers are paying $53 million, not the 53%. The next slide. Next slide just basically gives you an example, last year, I don't have this year's city's number, last year, the 2020, 21 budget that was adopted by the city, $72,451 was excess cost, not excess cost, was the ECS. That's 30% was flowing from the state just for education. Next slide, yes?
I actually want to stop there, because one thing, looking at the one that was two back, the fact or fiction one.
Yes.
I, I think one of the things that you could misread on this, or someone might misread, is where it says that, you know, New Britain's taxpayers support 42.36 of the educator's total budget. Some people might look at that 53 to 42 and say that's not a huge difference, but really, those are two different figures. And if you take from the next slide, how much the property taxes are, so the total property taxes in New Britain is 134,693,000. And then you divide how much of that property taxes is going to the Board of Education. The more accurate figure is under 40%.
Yes, yes, you're correct.
It's 39 and a half. Under 40% of our property taxes go to education.
And you're correct, Mr. Mercer. And that's one thing, there's a lot of misconceptions that are put out there by people, and it's incorrect. You know, one thing, I was in Sinsbury, we had the same thing in Sinsbury, and we used to do the property tax bills for the taxpayers, we used to back out what education was getting from ECS. It may have been small, but they came down, early on, you know, their business manager came down and said, hey, Captain, you know, when your tax collector does this, you really should be backing this up. And I looked at him and said, you know, you're right, you're correct, Dave. That is something you're getting from the state to fund education. The next slide is really just for this year, or next year, 2020, 21, 22. With the increase you have in the budget today, we're talking about just under 67 cents of our, of the dollar is coming from state and federal taxes. This is our combined budget that you're looking at today. 67 cents is coming from state and federal taxes. The other 31 cents is coming from property tax, and then another 1% from other revenues, and another, you know, less than a percent is coming from the food service fund. Kristin, next slide? Now, tonight's presentation is really, this slide here is just gonna talk about, you know, the presentation that's going forward. We're gonna talk about the positive funding changes from grants. I'm gonna skip over really quickly for excess costs, because many of you have been here before, it's the same verbiage you saw before, per pupil expenditure comparisons, staffing ratios, student to all certified staff, that's something new we found last year, found on the state website. And then the 2021, 22 operating budget, net category changes, staffing changes, and just a budget analysis. Next slide, Kristin. You know, one of the things we're finding out is, we always, you know, fortunately, we're seeing positive funding from grants. You know, we're seeing for next year, and, and these numbers for grants, to be honest with you, it's things that happen really this year, because we don't really know what's gonna happen with grants, especially like Title I. So this year, we, for Title I, we, we assumed we were gonna get the same dollar amount we received last year. And the same dollar amount last year was somewhere about $6.2 million. There have been years here which we assume something, and we've seen a decrease of $300,000, or we see an increase of $300,000. This year, we saw an increase of $453,000 for Title I. So the best information I have going forward for next year is, let's assume we're gonna get the same amount. It may be more, it may be less. The ESER grant is, if you think you remember, the ESER grant is that, oh, what do you call it? It's a Title I grant that has to do with the COVID relief from the feds. It's based on Title I, it's a $5.1 million, $5.2 million grant, which is really supposed to be used for technology and improvements for our students and so forth. Only reason I'm giving you the piece here, because I'm not, you know, this is, this is a grant that has to be expanded over two years, I'm just, here, I'm just giving you the differential, because we're picking up positions here. So in the ESER grant, we do have positions, new positions that your board approved, I believe, was it this summer, or was it before this summer? It was eight technology assistants, and that's the cost for those individuals. Those are positions, we're hoping to stretch them out for two years. Once the two years comes up, you know, more than likely, they will go away. There's possibility something will stay if we can afford it with the Alliance grant and other things, maybe there's some reason we can, we can keep some of this stuff. But also, it gives Mr. Prokop the opportunity to basically find people, because he does have openings, he does have people at a higher level that may be retiring, maybe moving on, whatever, so this, and these are, you know, qualified technology people, and it gives them a chance to move in our organization. It also gives them a chance to move outside our organization, because that's the whole thing about, they're creating value for themselves. The Alliance grant, this is gonna be, it's like a 10-year process, 10 to 11-year process. The increase last year was, or this year was $3.9 million. The, the state statute changes, now I do the calculation, we're expecting, we're gonna get another $3.9 million next year. The legislation would have to get together to basically revoke the law and all that. It's probably not gonna happen. One thing here is the Commission Network. The Commission Network is a grant that we, we're actually receiving this year. We never budgeted, I never showed Commission Network, but we're not really sure what we're gonna receive by the Commission Network. Next year, we're seeing with the Commission Network, it's year two in the Commission Network grant for Smalley, Slade, and Pulaski. Commission Network grant, we don't exactly know, we know it's probably in the last three years, maybe four years. Usually in your second year, we're being told that it's gonna get reduced probably by 25%. So that $1,650,000 just, is really just the, taking what we're currently receiving on the Commission Network grant, I think it's $2.2 million, is reducing it by 25%. Third-party billing, that's just something that we, we have some, we have some surplus in that fund, we can still use it, so we're increasing that funding by 154. And other funds are just all the other funds out there, you know, I'm not, you know, there's, you know, it goes down 50,000, so this is reduction to other funds. And then we see, you know, $6.5 million on our grant side and other funds, that's next year's budget. You know, right now, when you look at the budget in front of you tonight, and when I look at the budget, I look at the budget as, you know, New Britain's a little different than most communities, if you live in the suburbs, you get very little grant dollars, which is, which is good in my position, because I don't have to manage, the grants are kind of difficult, because they come and they go, and you, you kind of. because I don't have to manage. The grants are kind of difficult, because they come and they go, and you kind of figure out. Most communities, it's a simple budget. They, they have ninety-nine cents of the dollar comes from the local budget, and there's one cent that comes from someplace else. And it's, you know, it's usually a few positions, you know, it might be a few payers or whatever, and that, that's it. Um, so, we're always looking around. But right now, next year's budget, seventy-five percent of the increase you're seeing tonight is being supported by additional grant dollars. Kristen, next page? The next two pages really just reflects the excess costs. You know, it's something back on July first, based on your board initiative, the self-insurance fund, that the, the city, um, is now allowing this. Well, they're not allowing this. This money should always have been on the board's side anyway, but now it's coming to us. So, when the city receives the excess cost based on our students' costs, it used to be booked as a revenue to the city budget. The correct accounting is, once you receive that dollar back, it flows right back to education. That dollar comes back to us, and it gets posted as a contra expenditure. So, if I, if I have a budget that I spend two dollars out of, I get a dollar back, my expenditure shows up as one dollar. It shows up as a contra expenditure. It sounds like a revenue being posted to an expenditure. It's reducing it. So, that's something that just happened last year. It was the first year. This is the second year. This year, I'm expecting we're gonna have less dollars, because, um, with the COVID-19 and all that, we have, we have less students out. Mr. Smalley is doing a great job. But then today, you know, it just means we have less revenues. But we're also spending a little less money this year too. So, it's kind, you know, we don't really know what it's gonna look like this year. The next page is just the verbiage. This is just state statute. I didn't write this stuff down. You know, you might wanna read it. It just tells you how it's supposed to work. It's very simple. The next page is just giving you an example on excess cost. You know, this year, next year's budget, we're gonna assume, we're gonna get a revenue of three million dollars. It's the same dollar amount we used in our first year. What you're seeing down below is a five-year history on excess cost. As an example, last year was three point six million dollars, three point seven, two point three, two point four the year before. It gives you the five-year average. It also gives you a median for those five years. It also, if you look down below, it gives you the calculation how excess cost is calculated. What the city receives, what we receive. So, for an example, when you look at our per pupil expenditures, and let's just try to make it simple. Our per pupil expenditure right now is thirteen thousand, eight seventy-two. Let's just say it's fourteen thousand dollars, simple math. So, anything over four and a half times that cost, which is, let's say, fourteen thousand dollars. We just take fourteen thousand times four and a half times, that comes out to sixty-three thousand dollars. So, if we have a student that we spent a hundred thousand dollars on, we're gonna get a grant revenue up to thirty-seven thousand dollars. Now, there's a little caveat here. The state doesn't give us a hundred percent. They're supposed to. It's usually somewhere in the seventy percent range. So, that's why you see that allocation down below, a reimbursement of seventy percent. It's been hovering around seventy to seventy-four percent. So, I'm using that just to give you an indication. We don't know what the number's gonna be. Because the state only has so much in the kitty, and when all the communities spend the money, they, they send it forward to everybody equally. The next one? Kristen? This is just, I'm not gonna go through it. These are the lineups we use for excess special education. As an example, transportation is one of them. So, in next year's budget, if you look down way below, you see a nut budget of three million, nine ten. That's actually what I'm budgeting, or what we're budgeting for transportation. We expect the expenditure is gonna be four point three million dollars, four million, three seventy-three. We're also planning to get that revenue or contra expenditure to reduce our expenditure. So, next year's budget is really the net budget down below. This is just showing how the budget arrives. What we end up doing, last year was our first year, we actually have all the students. We have a hundred students outside, and we have all the costs. And once we have all the costs, we allocate it based on the cost of those students. So, it, it, it could change. This number here might change next year. The dollar won't change, but the allocation's gonna change. Next slide? Now, this is our per pupil expenditure. As you, as you can see, we're in the Dergai. We're the poorest community in Connecticut. Over the last five years, and to be honest with you, since I've been here, we've always been number seven in Dergai. We're not even close to number six. We're always number seven in the Dergai. So, as for most part, you're gonna see, these communities are always in the same rank order. If you go over the last five years, they're probably still in the same rank order. But we're always number seven. So, we're one sixty-six. And if we were receiving the same as our counterparts, or in the average, we'd be, our short cost is thirty-one million dollars. Same thing with the state average. So, you know, the state average is, you know, seventeen thousand, seven sixty-eight. If we received the state average, we'd be at thirty-nine million. We would need additional thirty-nine million dollars. Next slide? This slide just really just gives you, just indication, it's the same slide you saw before, maybe a little prettier. Um, it just shows you over the last five years, you know, one sixty-seven, one sixty-seven, one sixty-eight, one sixty-eight, now we're one sixty-six. And the differential between that, three hundred eighty-nine dollars from one year versus the other, a good portion was because of excess, uh, special education. We received over three million dollars on that. That, that's a good differential. So, if we didn't have that, we would be much higher than Danbury. We would not be one sixty-six. If we didn't get that excess cost last year, we'd still be one sixty-eight, but we'd be closer to one sixty-seven. Next slide? This next slide really gives you a twenty-year history on per pupil expenditure. And these aren't our numbers. These are numbers of the state. We can only go back twenty-one years, because that's how far back they go, at least from the website. You know, back in nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand, through really, I would say, you know, two thousand three, two thousand four, we were between forty-seven and sixty-eight in the state in rank, per pupil expenditure. We were as low as forty-seven, which means the lower you are, the higher you are in what you're spending. But, you know, back in two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, um, at that point in time, we were one sixty-four. We've always been between, really, we've been between one sixty-one and one sixty-eight over that ten-year period. You know, one, the next slide, Kristen? These next few slides are things that we found last year. This is on the state's website. It's, they call it the Source's Ed site. So, you have to find, you have to go on the site and find the link. It took me a little while this year to find the link again. Um, but I found it, and, you know, one of the things too, you know, when we look at our enrollment, or our certified staff, or our central office staff, you know, our numbers are lower versus the state average. And I think we all know that anyway, because, you know, our per pupil expenditure is lower too. So, it, it does make sense. You know, so sometimes you hear that, you know, we have more administrators. You know, it may be a situation, maybe we have more administrators in someplace. I don't know. I'm not really sure where. But not, it, it's very unlikely, you know. So, these next three slides really just show you the numbers that were much, were higher, yeah. And I, I agree with the shaking of the head. We're probably not.
I've had a long time on that site.
Yeah, so, yeah, I, I, yeah, I mean, you can go through. I mean, this Ed site thing is really, you can go through any community out there and find out what the ratios are. Yeah, you really can. But the thing is, I probably could do that for the board by finding the Dergai and see how we compare with the Dergai community, which might make sense. You know? And that's something I can probably do, like, find the link again.
Really, really quick question, just on the per pupil expenditure. I, if I'm doing the quick back-of-napkin math correctly, when you calculated our Derg average, that was with our low number included?
Yes, I just did the weighted average, yeah.
Yeah, because if it's, if I'm, if I'm doing the math right, if you count out our thirteen, eight, seventy-two.
You're right.
Then the average is much closer to the state average. It comes out to seventeen, you know, seventeen thousand, five hundred roughly.
Yeah, you're a hundred percent right. And that's one thing, when I was doing this, I was like, you know, what do you do? Is it the average with, without us? But, yeah, you're, you're correct. I do the average for the seven communities together.
Right, because before you can do your average per pupil, you have to take off which dollar amount?
Oh, um, that's the, what, um, what you're asking about is how the, uh, per pupil expenditure is accounted. And that's like, there's a complicated, it takes off transportation.
Takes off transportation, yeah.
That's right.
And I could actually give you that stuff. I tried backing that in this year. Something a little different happened this year. Uh, I, I, there's another deduction. Something we might, you know, I'm close, but I'm a little off. So, that's the only reason I didn't give you those slides.
Okay.
Yeah, that complication.
Yeah, I remember it being funky.
But it's apples to apples, because every district uses the same.
Yeah.
And that's what, yeah. So, the next, those three slides are really just from Ed site, because staffing and all that stuff. So, I mean, we can go through it, or, you know, I think you've seen it. You saw last year, we went through it. I think it's part of your transmittal letter. I just wanna make sure you have it in your presentation too, so you see the same facts out there. Kristen, can you get this slide for, um, general fund summary comparison by category? Okay, so, I'm gonna be really quick on that. Today, we made some changes to, you know, today I officially made changes. I knew there were some changes and so forth. So, this, this slide changed by the forty, okay, by the forty new teaching assistants, and also changed by the, um, one supervisor at the Satellite Career Academy. So, everything's the same. The changes were made in salary and fringes and insurances. Before, you had, uh, you had a zero increase, now you have a one point seven three percent. So, that, that's all that changed here. The next slide, the estimated grant funds, we're estimating forty-eight million dollars. This is the same thing you saw on your budget, um, in your budget book. There's been no changes there. The next slide, I just wanna bring this to your attention. You know, one of the things too, this is, this is something you're all aware of. Uh, it's your district partnership with Ed Advance. Uh, this is year two in the development of high-quality pre-K twelve curriculum that was supporting New Britain students. Um, you know, the, the cost for Ed Advance is one million, seven sixteen, five twenty-four. If you recall, this year, the funding for Ed Advance came from the Commissioner Network grant. New Britain High School had a, had a smaller grant on the Commissioner Network. I think it was year four, which is unusual. There may be, there might be some additional funding coming. We don't know for a fact. So, at this past year, two seventy-five came from New Britain High School. The other four ninety-nine, four oh six, five thirty-five came from Smalley, Pulaski, and Slade. What I did in this next year's proposed budget, the numbers can change. I actually reduced their amount. I, I budgeted seventy-five percent of their, their current dollars, because we know the grant. And one thing with the state, they wanna see those reductions. They want, they want you to pick it up somewhere else. It could be a position, they might say, you're gonna reduce the grant, so you better reduce that position by twenty-five percent, and you better place that position someplace else. So, right now, we just did a quick and dirty math. So, we, we reduced the Commissioner Network grant to represent seventy-five percent of the ones we think we're getting. And the Alliance this year, or next year, we're expecting another three point nine million dollars. We, we have funds available. We're gonna, we're gonna pay for the differential through the Alliance grant. And that's what you're seeing here. It's just more, give you an understanding what the plan is. The next slide, Kristen? You know, I always think of, you know, when we do the budget, you know, because we're heavily grant-oriented, that we really have to look at the whole picture. Because here in New Britain, you're gonna see that we may have fourteen hundred-plus positions, full-time positions. You know, thirty percent of our positions are being supported by grants. We're also finding out that, because the grant's the only place we're getting additional funding in, um, and many times, where we have less positions, certain positions are actually moving from local to grants. And the reason why, we, you have, you have no, you have no increases in, in the local budget for five years in a row, flat funding. So, and there's been additional costs. I think we all know that. So, something has to give. Either we cut positions, which is, if we didn't have the grants, that would have to happen, or we were able to move positions over to grants, which is the Alliance. Now, what, next page is really staffing changes. You know, one thing too, when we look at staffing changes too, I want everybody to know about that. This is more rounding to the nearest FTE. We do have, you know, some partial positions, so I didn't wanna make this like, you know, fifty-seven point zero one positions for administration. That's, that's wrong, but there's positions like that. So, I have to look at it and just kind of round it to the nearest FTE to make the numbers work. You know, when we look at this, I will look at really combined budget. The combined budget right now, in twenty-one, twenty-two, we're requesting fourteen hundred and eighty-eight positions um, versus fourteen eighteen, which is an increase of seventy. Changes that were made recently that you didn't see was forty-one positions, forty teacher assistants, and one supervisor at the Transition Center, um, for the, um, well, at the Career Academy for the Transition Center for, you know, the nine-through-twelve program. So, this is just giving you an understanding where we, where we stood in twenty twenty-one, which is the adopted budget you all approved back in June. So, in June, we had fourteen hundred and eighteen positions, of which those fourteen hundred and eighteen positions, a thousand and six were in the local budget, and four hundred and twelve were in the grant budgets. One of the things I, I've seen over the last few years is, you know, we're able to bring some positions into the grants. Some of these are lower paid positions. So, I don't want you thinking that, you know, um, usually the, the teachers and certified staffs are, you know, some of those positions are moving from local to grants. And I think we're seeing that all the time too, because if you look at next year, we're seeing the general fund, when it just comes to certified positions, it's a reduction of eleven. We're adding twenty-four positions, which means those eleven positions are moving over to the grants. And we're able to, you know, add additional twenty-four positions on top of that, which are grants. So, this just gives you really a breakdown. The next page, Kristen?
Quick question?
Yes.
When you say, for example, uh, these positions twenty twenty-one, you said they're based on our adopted budget. So, that doesn't reflect, because I know throughout the year, this year so far, we've added some positions.
And you have. That's what makes it really confusing, yeah. So, what you're gonna see, the, the new positions are really positions that have happened and are.
Plus additional?
Yes.
Okay.
I was just gonna say, it's definitely plus additional.
Yeah.
That I don't even think went through personnel, in all honesty.
And that's why, that's why it makes it very difficult, because, you know, um, you know, really, when you, even when you're on a city side, whatever, or, um, or a town side, or, you know, they, they always look at, when you do a budget, in any other community, you're comparing what you adopted versus what you're requesting. And it's no like in-between, and that's why it makes it really difficult to even show you that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Your staffing changes, so the next, you know, I'd say five pages, really are just going, five, six pages, is just going through staffing changes. We're seeing five, um, new admin positions. You know, when I talk about five new ones, we're talking at the lower level. You know, when you look at an admin contract, you, you might have a director level. You may have a, which is the highest level probably. Then you have like a principal coordinator level. Um, you know, of course, the high school and all that stuff's much higher paid, and then the middle school's next, and elementary. But you see the principals on those levels, coordinator levels, they're high. Then you also have, uh, you know, a lower level, which is a supervisor slash assistant coordinator level. These five positions are those positions. You know, they're well-paid positions, but they're actually people that will report to an administrator. So, the, the plan is to add a transition supervisor at New Britain High School. A transit, uh, New Britain Transition Center supervisor to be at the Satellite Career Academy. Assistant coordinator of ELS and World Language, which will report to the coordinator, which will be housed, my understanding, somewhat, could be housed a little at, at Gates, but also will be possibly housed at Dela Rado, uh, with the new program being implemented back in here. And then through people's services, we already hired, or we have two BSAs for, um, a Bridges program, or a more evolved Bridges program. We're talking about having two supervisors. Now, where are they gonna sit right now? That's, right now, they're just sitting centrally, but for next year, that plan's coming out.
Isn't Bridges, what did, Bridges was something else before?
Yeah, I mean, it's something else. Nancy, you wanna respond to that?
Yeah, sure. Um, yeah, Bridges, uh, it was called Supremise at Ch, it didn't really have a name at Holmes. We had a middle school, um, I can't remember what we called it, a middle school steps, maybe? I can't recall.
Okay, I just knew it. And it's overarching for every, it's at the elementary school, middle school, and high school, the Bridges program?
That's correct. And, um, in my superintendent report, I kind of gave a little bit of the history. Um, and, and as we, as our continuum of services for all kids in New Britain, Bridges is the one program that we're currently, we have a task force that we meet weekly on now. And how are we gonna bring it to the same level, um, of quality that we are seeing with our small learning and with New Britain Transition Center? And so, that's, and, you know, we create the need for two district supervisors with, or supervisors for these Bridges programs. Um, we, we found, and again, look back to my superintendent report, it talks about, you know, just the support it provides for teachers on a day-to-day basis, uh, to have someone in the building they can go to. Uh, you know, constant looking at the data, again, looking at this as, you know, um, and my superintendent report points out. and my superintendent report points out that our Bridges program are not seeing the same levels of success as small classroom and New Britain T-City, so.
When we get to questions, I'll do my questions, because I got a whole bunch.
Oh, man.
I know, I'm sorry. I apologize. When you add, you know, a gazillion positions.
I'll try to answer them.
It's gonna.
Always I'll make one. Um, next slide?
Bring up some questions.
Now, these are staffing changes on, on certified teachers. I, I can go through them if you want. You know, the big changes here, you know, I would say would be, you know, look at New Britain High School. We're talking, I think this has to do a lot with the credits and so forth, to expand the credits. A social studies teacher at New Britain High School, a oral language teacher, Satellite Career Academy. There's been, there's been different changes. Guidance Council at New Britain High School, business teacher at Satellite Career Academy. You'll see a swap-up between a math and science teacher at Satellite Career Academy. It's really the same person. Years ago, a few years back, we hired a math teacher who was due certified. That individual's really doing science. So that's just really swapping out. Guidance Council at New Britain High School along with a guidance counselor at Adult Ed. The Adult Ed is through the grant. It's, it's not a full FT, but it's like a .76, .80, so that's why you're seeing a 1.0. Instructional coach is something that we added an instructional coach this summer. That's what that is. You'll see an equity and climate coach. If you remember, there was a climate coach at Slade that was just recent, kind of changed the job title again, um, you know, I shouldn't say.
But I don't see removal of the deans.
Yes.
I don't see that though.
No, the dean is in here. I'm gonna tell you why the dean is in here. We always look at equity in the school system. So the, the thing that came out with the equity and climate coach, or climate coach running at Slade, it was supposed to remove the, the dean.
Yep.
Also, there's a thing that we, you know, looking to do a climate coach at Pulaski.
Yep.
The one thing, we always try to make sure the middle schools are treated equal one another. Because if we don't treat them equally, we're gonna get that phone call day one, which I've, I've had before, and say, why don't I have a lunch aid? And, and so you have to treat both schools the same.
Correct. And we were told the deans would be removed from Slade. He would not be replaced.
And that's something, you know, and that's the whole, the whole thing too with this, with this presentation tonight. Things can change. And that's why, you know, when I talk to the board, or even when I talk to, you know, staff and all that, I know people get kind of, you know, internally, people get hooked up and say, geez, you didn't do this, you didn't do that. And they're correct. There's gonna be, there's gonna be a plan too. So I mean, tonight, we're just looking for approval from the board. And this budget's gonna change again. It always has. I mean, we, I think we all know that. Because with these changes, the board has every right to debate them with, with us, with the superintendent. And, and the board has. And those discussions will happen. But when it comes to June, you're gonna have a much better budget in June. I don't mean dollar-wise, but you're gonna have a much better understanding that is either you're gonna buy into it, or you're not gonna buy into it. So that's what that is, Gil. It, it's basically saying, well, you need to treat them both the same. And I'm not saying that you can't strip one away.
It was sold to Personnel and Finance that the deans would not be, the dean at Slade would not be replaced. He would be replaced with the climate coach.
You're a hundred percent, I took this upon myself, because I knew when they made that change at the end, if we, if we, if I didn't incorporate that change, I didn't tell the superintendent that, I apologize. But I just knew it'd come back and bite, bite somebody.
Well, I also understood that they were trying this thing, so that's kind of a pilot.
Yeah.
So it's part of what they're finding is that they still need a dean to support, like, consequence-type things versus, you know, I mean, that may be part of it.
I think one of the things too, yeah, and you're right. I mean, right now, the climate coach is brand new.
What it's looking like in implementation.
Right, but it was never, it was, that person was gonna be able to do all, instead of adding an additional admin-type person to a school.
You're, you're a hundred percent correct. And I think the reason why it's included right now is because if you, if you give it to one, you have to get the other. I think with the Slade situation, I think we're gonna have a little progress as, if it's a good thing. And you're gonna find out if you can do it or not.
But it's, it's gonna be hard to, if Mr. Jones is staying on for 20, whatever, part-time, it's gonna be hard to tell what, what the downplay is. You know what I mean? What is the actual change? If he's still there.
I think he's, I, I believe he's.
I don't know if he's gone.
He's gone, he's gone.
Yeah, I believe, I, I, yeah, I believe he's gone.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so he, okay.
So Mr. Jones is, is actually just started his, um, um, working, um, out of New Britain High School with Gino Ayala, uh, the Student Assistance Center, as we try to get student assistance centers up and running at both of our middle schools. It, it's, it's all part of the bigger plan around equity and climate, right? And making sure that our, our middle schools, um, we're taking, we're taking good care of our middleers so that once we get to high school, conflict resolution is a part of, of who they are. It doesn't, doesn't happen overnight. And Gil, you're right, we did say that, you know, once Mr. Jones goes, we're not gonna backfill that dean position. That's true, we're not. So Mr. Jones is now working with Mr. Ayala and both of the middle schools at, um, and there's training. Dr. Sanders is involved with this as well. There's training for these, these climate coaches, these equity climate coaches, um, that we, we want to be sure it's systematic and it's built into the system. Not that Slade's doing it one way, Pulaski's doing it another way, but that it all comes, it stems from our work around equity. And Dr. Sanders can, we'll, we'll, we'll keep you abreast as we go along. And that's what I have right now. So you're right, Mr. Jones is not there and we are not filling that dean position.
Right.
Now, as far as, I, I said to Mr. Kane, I need a equity climate coach at Pulaski too, because we, we have to, we have to have resources for all of our middle schools, right? It can't just be someone's idea and there's not a, a vision around what that position will do and how it's going to help us pursue excellence for every New Britain student. But our equity office is brand new too. This is, it's, it's taking, it'll take time. But I have full confidence that we're gonna get there. We just have to hire and find the right people, make, or that it's well-known throughout the district, what the role is, what the student assistance centers are for. And so Mr. Jones, working with Mr. Ayala now, is to, to, um, help replicate the structure at our two big middles. Did that answer it?
Sure. Not really, right? Because you're adding the positions, but you're not taking away the deans. So your thought is you're gonna keep both?
Yeah, let, 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 let me, let me, let me.
The dean, the dean is gone.
Yeah.
Now, we're talking about Pulaski, you're right, Kevin probably didn't take it up, that's an oversight. But, but at Slade, the, the dean is, the position is gone.
Okay, so the budget book doesn't match what is here?
You're right, you're right.
Okay, I'm good, I'm good.
Yeah, and I, I realized that, because I, I made that my own call just because I knew the equity thing. But I also realized that coming in June, we would have a better understanding, better picture if it's working.
Okay.
So that way, it's almost like a placeholder. That we don't come back later on and say, oh geez, you know, and then, then the board says, you know. So I thought it was much safer to leave it in for that reason only.
Okay.
Safe first. The other thing too is you're gonna see recruitment specialist and equity climate specialist and talent. I think you, if you might recall, we already, we already have a recruitment specialist and talent. It's a .5. This was something that was not part of last year's budget. It was not adopted in June, it was something that happened in July, I believe July. And that person, it was talked about at 1.0. The person is currently .5. It's in next year's budget, 1.0. It may end up being just a .5 too. The equity climate specialist is somebody to work directly with Dr. Sanders, really report to Dr. Sanders. That's something new. You, you probably will see a future job description on that one.
That's not here.
Yes, it is.
Where am I?
Equity and climate specialist.
Right down to recruitment specialist, on page 26.
Right column.
Right column.
26.
Oh, I got you. Okay.
Okay.
Sure. I'm the, probably, maybe I'm the only one that's like, something's just not setting well with me right now, with it. Because, can I just go on a tangent just for a second?
Sure.
Because we just hired, we're, we have 19, you know, either admins or higher up, but we're getting rid of 11 paras or BSAs. Like, that just doesn't sit well with me.
One thing too, when you look at the, you know, and I'm not, I'm not speaking about the person and whatever. You know, we currently, in, in the COVID-19, you know, we have a lot of open positions over the end of this year. And those are things that, you know, when we come to June, People's Services is gonna back, like anybody here, we're gonna start looking at the organization and finding out if these things can happen or not happen. Today, you, you have in front of you 40 new teaching assistants. Those are things we're gonna be looking at, and they make a lot of sense.
But what's for kindergarten? Where are the eight? These are PPT paras, it says on here.
Well, that's, well, yep, okay. So, and, and we also have PPT specialists, okay? So I, I can't talk as to what happens, but if you think about it, if you have a certified staff that's running a meeting, he or she should have some type of qualifications to, to take the notes and run the meetings. And I think that's what it comes down to, is you, you have highly qualified people. It's like, you know, you have people that have a secretary, you know, that have a secretary. And, and what's the secretary doing? He or she may not be doing much, because that person doesn't answer their own phones. It's the same thing, it's the same concept, that if you have highly qualified people, they, they can do certain things.
I was just gonna say, not to jump to too many things, but I, it's also my understanding that teacher assistants will basically have higher qualifications than para.
Yes.
So they'll be able to do.
Yeah, you're, you're, yeah. You're actually, for teacher assistants, you're actually, your, the goal is to actually find people with college education. I mean, it, you know, it pays a decent thing. Hopefully, some of these people will actually want to become teachers, so they might end up being certified teachers. You get them in the, you get them in the pipeline and they end, might end up being teachers in the school system. It's, it's a perfect thing. You can get qualified people.
And Kevin, thank you. It's hard because I don't see you, because I'm seeing the presentation, so I hope I'm jumping in appropriate time. Two things, I will have Mark speak to the, um, the PPT para positions. I'll have him speak to that in just a minute. But, and I wish, Kevin, and I wish we, and we can produce and send to them, uh, multiple, I would say in the seventies of increasing of non-certified staff over, over the last four years. You know, we've made ourselves whole from where the prior administration came and did a, a cut and layoff, and we, people, I mean, you know, at every level of the organization, it's about training and growth. And, um, to, to Dr. Sim's point, I mean, hiring teachers assistants who are potential teachers is a, is a great resource for us to, first of all, see how they're working in our schools and, and then makes it much easier to hire someone, right? If you can watch them and they interview for you for a whole year as you watch them interact with our kids. We've done the same with, we've done the same with para educators. We've done the same with family school liaison, BSAs. So we, we have increased. This year, we're happy, I mean, we have a lot of teachers. That speaks to the graduation requirements, right? And, um, and, and putting people in place. And then the equity and climate coaches, again, you know, when we talk about why, why do we have chronic absence? We, we've got to build a better, a better environment. Well, that requires support, coaching, coaching of certified staff. That's gonna require people with degrees that can do that for teachers. We know that the teachers are the number one who can build relationships with students. That's, and it's changing adult practices. It's changing, you know, how we've been doing business for years and, and seeing that it's not working with many of our students. And I'm gonna let stuff in right now for the PPT para educator.
Hi. So I want to make it clear to the board, um, we are not eliminating any para positions in the district, okay? We're looking at this time, as superintendent stated, um, at the org, making some changes in the organization to better support students directly. Um, we have paras, some para educators right now that are, are primarily, um, uh, functioning in a, a, a clerical capacity. And, um, we believe that their services would be more appropriate, um, uh, working with children where we need them right now. So, um, we're looking at combining of some, some, uh, PPT specialists, for instance, um, are able to do some of the work that those individuals are doing. And so we're working through that right now. Um, these four PPT specialists, People's Services specialists that you see on end of 4.0, two of those individuals are slated to go to the high, uh, the middle schools, uh, one at Slade and one at Pulaski. Where we currently have, um, the only buildings in the district, frankly, that currently do not have a PPT person dedicated, a specialist dedicated to running PPTs. Rather, we're using school psychologists right now to function in that role, which then takes them away from servicing children directly, which we, obviously we all agree, um, that, that needs to occur. So this is something that we've been working towards, as you recall, a couple of years ago. We put, we, we moved, we made the change, putting PPT specialists in the elementary school. And now we're looking to have that same support in our, um, high school and in our, um, middle schools, um, which we currently don't have. So that, and, and, and so those individuals will be picking up some of the, um, work that frankly, most districts, they're doing anyways. And, and where, New Britain is sort of, you know, yeah, I don't really know where the PPT paras came from, but, um, it's a very unusual position. And I'm not aware of any other district in the state that has, that has anyone in that role. So we're looking at reorganizing that. I want to make it clear that the board, at this time, we are not, and I've had a discussion with the power union president, um, we are not going to be eliminating any paras, um, in the district in the next year. That is not on the table. Um, we're looking to repurpose some individuals, that's all.
So presentation-wise, you know what I mean? Because down at the bottom, there's, it says, you know, getting rid of one speech assistant, but it says replaced by speech pathologist. Right, I think that's just probably a better presentation for me, maybe? But I just see a lot more, similar to how I felt when we did the facilities, right? We just started the equity and now we're building in, you know, supervisors and, and everything else, when we really don't know what it looks like yet.
And Gil, I, I hear what you're saying, but I would argue one person cannot undo.
I'm not saying she can undo it. I'm saying what does it look like and how do you know you need supervisors and et cetera, et cetera? That's all.
I understand.
Thank you. Thank you. Because trust, I mean, I know we are in a time when we have to change, but how do you know how to change unless you've really started to dig into it? And, and instead of spending money on a supervisor, I'd rather spend money on, you know, maybe you need five FSLs to, to communicate with those kids and not just a supervisor telling you how to implement equity and climate change.
It's not a supervisor, Gil, that's a specialist.
Specialist, sorry.
That, that's okay. Yeah, no.
It's an admin position.
That's true. But, you know, Dr. Sanders is only one person. She can run book studies, she can organize, but she needs someone to be hooped on the ground helping with the buildings as well. One person doesn't make a department, especially. This is a huge lift for us in, in terms of shifting, shifting people's mindsets and, um, we, we have supports in the buildings in place.
Right, but that's also why we've approved a lot of curriculum to be purchased to teach our, to bring in the equity and the inclusion.
The curriculum is only as anti-racist or equitable as the person teaching it.
Say that again?
The curriculum is only as equitable or anti-racist as the person teaching it.
Right, I'm not talking about curriculum, I'm talking, the curriculum that we just purchased to teach our, our teachers about equity and inclusion and looking at it with a, a bigger lens.
We didn't purchase a curriculum, Chris.
So what did we purchase?
We have, we are.
We have vendors coming in to teach it, to our teachers, at Dela Rado and a few others.
Right, right, so like to coach.
To coach.
Right, but that's not, that's in a few schools. And so this sounds like it would be someone in district kind of doing all that. So we're spending a lot of that money right now on consultants.
Right.
But that doesn't make you, like, I can go to, I can spend all year in an equity training and not be.
And not be able to implement it. I agree with you a hundred percent.
Right, like I, you know.
Right. And you know what it is for me? Typically, when there's a new personnel position, it comes to us, we talk about it, it's not just part of the budget, right? That 99% of the time, it comes in as a personnel, we're changing, we're developing a new position, here's how much it's gonna cost, yay or nay? It doesn't just become part of the budget.
I think that's been one, this is for the current year, like with our current budget, like moving around.
Right.
And, and Gil, I will say, these positions will come to you, but we have to paint a. And, and Gail, I will say, these positions will come to you, but we have to paint a picture of what next year is going to, going to look like, and what we're going to need for next year to, to begin in earnest, having conversations with staff and changing practices in our district. What does that require? It requires more than Dr. Sanders, right? It requires, and, and now she's working in, and she's training herself, well, she's been training, I should say, and we're partnering with CIRC, and we're doing all of those things, but you have to have some staff to help you with the rollout.
Other questions?
Nope.
Now, can I just add one thing to, that, that I was thinking would be, could maybe have, not with this meeting, but future meeting, workshop, whatever, is just kind of a summary, you know, sky-high overview of position changes that we're looking at. You know, and the picture, I think, that Nancy was referring to trying to paint is a lot to digest when we're looking at just the numbers and everything else in, in a meeting. But if we can maybe separate that and look at that on its own, you know, because, again, we don't know what cabinet's thinking because we're not in those meetings, but it'll be good for us to understand the justifications.
Right.
Okay, let me, let me just say something, you know, when we look at, you know, years ago, when Mr. Cooper came on board, I think we all recall that there was a reduction in para's. It was quite a good reduction in para's. Um, since those days, and since Nancy came on board to be our superintendent, um, the numbers have increased. We're, we're probably higher between para's and BSA than we ever have been. So, you know, let's make, let's make a point now, we haven't really gone backwards, uh, we've gone ahead. When you look at, at, at a new initiative or a new system and so forth, you are, you are taking position, you're looking and say, what do I need? We know that we, we, we need other positions. So, you are seeing a budget, let's be clear, that has a reduction in para's. Nobody's losing their position. Those people don't exist right now, so we have many open positions. So, when you look in our organization, you say, what do I need? I, you know, you know, we talk about family school liaisons, and, you know, there has to be a need, there has to be a give and take. And you're seeing with the teacher assistants at the kindergarten slash first grade, you're seeing there's a need for that. And right now, when you look at the PPT para's, or whatever you want to call them, is really not a need. So, that, that you can basically take somebody who's in a position, a PPT para is a para. So, let's, let's, let's be right to the point. He or she can be, if they are para's, they just do a certain piece that they don't work with students, but they have the expertise to work with the students. So, we do have people maybe sitting in those positions, they're just being transferred to another position, or they're being able to apply to another position. They're not losing their jobs, we have openings. So, when you look at next year's budget, we're not going to be sending notices to employee X and say, hey, you lost your job. We're going to basically say, your, your, your position right there is no longer here, but we have plenty of para positions that you can apply for or get transferred to. So, those positions, that happens all the time. So, when we look at, the changes do happen, and, and changes have to happen to move ahead.
I just want to say, I think one thing that's wrong, we're adding pieces here and there. We don't see the whole picture. So, when I look at all of these different positions, I like, I don't know where they fit in, under which department necessarily, and what's the flow chart like? So, now you're saying Sanders, and these people are going to be working with her, but there's nothing here except for maybe the name clue, if you know what they are, to show you how this fits together. So, I think if we could somehow see like an overall picture, like all of these managers and where are they, who are they working with, where are they working? Because it just, now it's just names of people and places, and sometimes it doesn't make sense unless you know a little bit more than most people would know in these positions.
So, thank you, Annie. At the next personnel meeting, um, actually, the each department is revising their org charts now, they're due to me next Monday. And so, by now, we'll have the org chart with the, with the, uh, job descriptions behind it. So, we can have conversations at the next personnel.
Okay, that'd be good, because then we'll know what kinds of questions to ask and how it fits in.
Because I would say like the benefit specialist, hello, where does that come from? Anyway, sorry, sorry.
I just, I have a question, because I don't know, if you go back to page twenty-five on the MBTC supervisor, what's SCA? What is that?
Satellite.
Satellite, Chris, okay, okay.
I thought there was going to be a right thing to explain.
And like, what is a transition supervisor? I don't know what they do.
Okay.
Sorry.
Um, I can have Anna Swaby talk about that for you, um, Gail.
Nick has a question, sorry. I'm going to, I'm going to be quiet, I, we can talk about it in personnel, I apologize, I'm going to stop, done.
I, I just, I just think it's important to also look at the big picture, because I, if you look at the total of what's being requested in new positions, out of the seventy new positions, seven percent of them are admin, twenty-seven percent.
Seventy new positions.
Out of the seventy new, the seventy changed positions, so if you go to the staffing changes rounded to the nearest.
So, forty, right, so the new, sorry, the new, my, that number hasn't clicked in my head yet, because it's in the new, tonight's presentation, not what we studied, gotcha.
So, in the seventy, out of those seventy positions, seven percent of them are admin, twenty-seven percent of them are teachers. Seven percent in non-certified are managerial supervisor, forty-four percent.
Hold on, go back.
This isn't a conversation, I'm allowed to just make my statement.
I just wanted to hear what you said.
I just want to make my, okay. Sorry.
I just wanted to hear what you said.
So, under non-certified, manager supervisor, there's five new positions, but that's only seven, again, seven percent of that seventy total. Forty-four percent of the new positions that are being proposed for next year's budget are under the category of para, BSA, or TA. So, that's where the majority of these positions are, are in that sort of lumped category. And I think it's important to look at them sort of in the bigger buckets. Because these, as Mr. Kane pointed out, a lot of these, the reason they're grouped like this in these non-certified and certified categories is there's movement within those, right? And there's, it's a talent pool that we, we can use and access. And then there's fourteen percent that are others, and that's like clerical help and, and the category of other. But I just think it's important to notice that the majority of the new requests that are in this budget have to do directly with teaching students. Over fifty percent, over sixty percent of the new requests that we have in here are people who are working with students, with teachers. I, I just think that's, that's where we often get criticized, that we aren't putting enough resources into the classroom, but I think, sorry, these staffing changes really are focusing there.
Can I say one thing? I mean, Mr. Mercer, thank you, that may, you know, that even cleared it up myself. You know, one thing we always talk about in New Britain is, I know superintendent always talks about the pipeline. Pipeline where, you know, we hire somebody, and then he or she can better themselves by moving into a, a better position. We do have a countless number of para's that do have degrees or are working in degrees, and some, some want to be teachers. But at the same time, you know, they, they actually now have an opportunity to go from a para position to a TA position. It pays a little more, it, it's, it's probably a little higher quality, and not to say they can't do it, but it gives them the opportunity to basically prove themselves even more and make more money for their families. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's a great, so you really think about it, it's a combination of both. They're not para's, but they're teaching assistants, which is, we can, we think it's a higher position, and it's a great way to move up in the organization. They create value for themselves, they create value for themselves for the school district, as a para, as a TA, whatever. They can create values in the school district a few years from now, to become a teacher. They create value for themselves where maybe they can move out of the school district and become a teacher in another school district. And it gives them the opportunity to get that, those credentials and make their resume much better.
Um, will, will some of those teacher assistants also have the opportunity to work within the preschool? Or are they strictly going to be kindergarten and first grade?
So, I think the rationale behind the kindergarten teachers for this coming year in particular is that we're going to have a lot of kids who are coming into kindergarten who don't have a preschool experience, um, or had a really weird preschool experience. Um, and we're just going to have a lot of kids adjusting to school in a different way. And this is a place where, you know, we gave up para's in the, in the kindergarten years ago so that we could get to full, all-day kindergarten. Um, that was a hard.
What did, what did you give up, sorry?
We gave up para's in the kindergartens so that we could have every child getting full-day kindergarten. And so, we, you know, we know that we've got kids who come into this school district well behind in language and, um, social and emotional skills and executive function when they're starting kindergarten. So, having more resources at the lowest grade levels really helps to try and catch them up. That's the rationale behind doing that.
Yeah, excellent.
Yep.
Um, preschool also has, correct me if I'm wrong, but preschool also has a, I don't know if it's required by statute, but they're, they have to have one adult per, six children, I believe.
Ten, ten.
Ten.
Oh, ten, ten, one for every ten. Kindergarten, there's no, no requirement for that.
You're talking to a licensing inspector there, so. She's a daycare licensing inspector.
Yeah, maybe, maybe more than daycare is one in six, one to six.
No, one to ten.
It's one to ten.
One, one to, the ratio is lower in the birth to three.
Oh, that's true, okay.
And in a family childcare.
Okay, right, but kindergarten, there's no, there's no limit, so by comparison, you're looking like, you know, for example, where I teach in Cheshire, our kindergarten class size is typically fifteen, sixteen, with, with, right, with two adults, the teacher and the, the TA or IA, whatever it's called.
Right.
My daughter was one of twenty-seven K with no IA, you know, in Britain, so that's.
Yeah.
They're supposed to read by the age of eleven.
Right, and, right, right.
Dennis Mercer?
Um, just to sort of build on that, it's almost like, if you think of it, the reason I think it makes sense that they're lumped into the same category as the BSAs and the para's, is by putting this intervention, these teacher assistants in kindergarten, it's an intervention. And hopefully, with those students, we might need fewer para's later on, right? Because there's definitely.
Or BSAs.
Or BSAs, exactly. I, I think it's an investment, um, in the early education, and I think that pays, that'll pay off dividends down the road, both, you know, educationally and fiscally.
Okay, are there other questions about the budget? There more pages of the presentation?
There is, I'll try to record with you.
We can just carry on, just vote.
You can vote, you, you have the staffing changes on manager supervisors, you already approved these, so this is, this should not be any surprise to you. Um, the clerk, the next page, the clerical staffing changes, you're pretty much aware of all those two, those have already been approved. Um, everything the board acted on, other than the benefit specials, that is a new position. So, when you look at the clerical on page twenty-eight, everything's already been through you, um, other than that position right there. If you look at twenty-nine, we already kind of went over that, we hashed out on the para, BSA, and TA. The health medical, that's really additional nurse, and that's really a student needs. We always find that out, either we decrease by one, we increase by two, or decrease by three. Every year, jacking and maddying, if there's a student needs that comes into the school system, sometimes we have to have an additional nurse, LPN, that's with that student. That's what you see here, it may, it may go away. Other changes was two-point-O, three-point, uh, family school liaisons, which are, which were already approved and are already in there, and the speech assistant, which was a position we eliminated this year, during this year for new speech pathologist. Yes?
I know what a benefit specialist is, because we have one in where I teach, but could you explain for?
Well, a benefit specialist, you know, in the HR.
I know what a benefit, a benefit specialist is.
It's, it's a help, it's the person that helps.
I'm not saying you know.
Yeah, works with the employees, um, and the health insurance and all that. Um, our HR department had a benefit specialist slash, um, labor relations, which is on the current manager, and that's at that position. So, it's really, you know, you think about benefit specialist, you, you want to make sure you have somebody that's a full-time job, who can, actually, you know, works well with, with the employees, um, and actually, the position can also help out in talent, yes?
So, is that a, is it a new position, or are you changing the manager's position?
No, it's a new position.
Okay, so it's in addition to what the manager does today, somebody that, to assist her?
Yes.
Gotcha.
Your next several pages are just really the budget analysis, you've probably seen that in your cover page. It's, it was part of your, I believe I, I included most of this stuff in here. Um, the only change you really see here is when you go to certified salaries, I added the administrator, additional administrator in there, so that, those numbers changed, um, from like two-point-six million to two-point-seven million dollars. When you go to the, um, non-certified staff, the forty teaching, teacher assistants were added in, it used to be six-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars, now it's one-million-nine-seventy-seven, that's just showing the, the changes. So, everything's the same other than those forty positions. And the same thing with the health insurance, we added health costs for those employees, of course, that goes up. And also retiring contribution, um, that goes up too, because they're all going to be under the MERS pension plan. So, MERS pension plan has an eighteen-point-three-nine percent contribution by us, so if you pay somebody thirty-two thousand dollars, we, we contribute about six thousand dollars towards their pension. All the others are the same changes you saw in your transmittal letter, any questions, you know, you can, you can ask me today. You know, the whole thing too, you can always reach out to me for any of this stuff. And the last page, well, not the end page, page thirty-five, it, it's, it's up to you, board, you know, motion of the forward superintendent's budget, and that's what it is, one-twenty-seven, eight-seventy-two, seventy-eight, so that's the requested budget in front of you tonight.
Okay, so we have a seconded motion.
Did we second?
Yeah.
We were at the beginning.
Second?
I was going to say it was already seconded.
Yeah.
It's already been seconded, so we have a seconded motion, sorry, we're muffled, ma'am, conversation here. Um, is there further discussion on this?
I just want to add that this is modest, and from what I've seen in districts and schools and whatever, you know, we should be adding twenty-five interventionist positions for math and twenty-five interventionist positions for language at all the grade levels, and have these, you know, real interventionist teams that meet six, you know, every six weeks and put in plans in place and whatever, we don't have that. And those are the things that then when people argue about our standing academically, um, not that I agree with necessarily what the, what the measure to define what our success is, are currently are, um, but when you look at those, and they're a certain way, it's like this chicken or the egg, like, well, show us you can achieve, and then maybe we'll give you money, you know? It's like, well, we don't have the tools that other places have to make this happen when a child is behind, um, you know, in whatever measures we, we are using, so that's my own comment, thank you.
So, what's the budget, do we, have we had enough budget fund? Do we want to put this to a vote now and do it, or do we want to continue this for, you know, postpone this to a special meeting? That's, you could just simply adopt it now and send it on?
Well, it has to be there, but, yeah, so, yeah.
Yeah, it has to be there by the fifteenth.
Right.
And basically, if people wanted to discuss it further at a special meeting, then the motion would be, you'd make the motion to postpone it to a special meeting. Uh, I'm happy with the motion as it sits on the table, you know, as it is right now.
Okay. So, any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, all in favor of submitting this proposed budget to the Board of Finance?
Board of Finance and Taxation, Mayor's Office, and Common Council.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One, okay. All right, motion carries. And let's move on to the next item. Since that was the first of many in this conference.
Make a motion to approve purchase order and bid waiver for delivery van for CSDNB food service department in fifty-eight thousand, six forty-five.
Any discussion? All in favor?
You know, I'm kind of done with questions, I just worry about spending money that is for COVID, like COVID times, or is this? You know, I'm kind of done with questions, I just worry about spending money that is for COVID, like COVID times, or is this?
No, we, this, you know, we have a couple leases on, on vehicles that are coming up. This is coming to food service fund, which we know we have excess funds, really the excess funds out there.
Maybe use some of that to make some.
It has to be, it has to be spent on food service, so.
Yeah, has to be, has to be.
Well, what I was going to say is maybe better what we are providing our students today, maybe we could use some of that money for that.
Well, you're, you're gonna see that, one of, one of the things coming up tonight too, on the food service, has to hire the consultant, I know Anne Alphano has spoken to the board about it. She's very qualified, and that's, that's, and that's coming from that fund too, and that's something to look at the meals. Yeah, I wish, I was supposed to text Anne to tell her to get on, but this one a little later than I thought. So, yes, it's all coming from food service. And, you know, there's ample funds out there to do it right.
Okay.
Okay.
Share.
Um, just as a general statement, I think part of the frustration people are expressing currently is people talking over other people, not letting people finish their thoughts. So I think it's very important that if, like, it helps if you let, i- if the people are allowed to finish their statements, really, it's not, in, in a board meeting, it's not, we're not supposed to have conversations between people, questions should be directed through the chair, and part of the reason for that is to avoid cross chatter that tends to lead to, you know, people talking over each other or things like that. And Ms. Conley can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that what she was trying to say is she has reservations about spending fifty-eight thousand dollars on a new truck, where that money could perhaps be better spent on current food quality. And I think that was the point she was trying to make, I think it was just the point she was making and not necessarily a directed question.
Correct.
So, I just think tempers are up a little bit, and that may help, because if we.
Tempers may not be up as much as your spidey senses and spending money on things that could be used for other things, because we have all this money sitting around, that is all.
Okay, so is there any, okay, sir.
I do have an actual question as far as why, if, if we potentially have time, why we're not going out to bid on this versus doing a bid waiver?
Anne Alphano is on, I, you know, I know she, I just texted her, so I'm not sure if she hears the question.
I'll, I'll repeat it if Ms. Alphano did not hear.
Yeah, she is, I know.
My, my question is as to why we're looking to do this as a bid waiver rather than going out to bid on the, on this item, and it's a similar question I have for the next one as well.
The delivery van and the delivery trucks.
Uh, the delivery trucks have specific requirements and specifications, and the vendor is on the state contract. So basically, the state already went out to bid, and they are the vendor, so that work has been done for us already.
Then what about the van? What about the van?
The van also is extremely specific, because it's for food delivery, it has to be refrigerated. It's not something that we would be easily able to just go out to bid, and I don't think it would be readily available. So it's very specific.
Yep.
Um, I would request, and this kind of goes to all departments, that in the future, if something is on the state approval list, that that information makes it into the memo, because that is one of the exceptions, is that we are allowed to substitute things on the state contract lis- list for bids, in which case it doesn't necessarily need a bid waiver, it'd still need a purchase order approval. But if we see on the board memo that it is something that we are getting from the state contract list, then that just answers a question for the board before we even get, get to the item, so it, just going forward in the future, all departments, please.
Okay.
Okay, understood.
Any further questions or discussion on item D, the purchase order and bid waiver for the van? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? One opposed? Okay, and then let's move to item C.
Make a motion to approve purchase order and bid waiver for delivery trucks for CSDNB Food Service Department.
Second.
Discussion?
Are these replacing? Are these replacing delivery trucks? That are like out of, or they addition?
No, they are, basically, the current trucks are now obsolete, and they are actually leased. So the lease is up, and the trucks are no, no longer useful. So yes, we would be disposing of those trucks, and these would now be ours.
Okay.
Thank you.
So any further questions or discussion on item C? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Make a motion to approve purchase order and bid waiver for school nutrition and food service consultation provided by Noto Nutrition Consulting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a second motion. Any questions about this?
Let me just mention that Stephanie Noto, the consultant, she met with us regarding the wellness committee back up. And she'll be responsible for working with the wellness committee, Witsins and members of the community to revamp school food.
So we are not our own food service provider, I'm curious why we need to bring in a nutrition specialist, wouldn't they have a nutrition specialist within Witsins?
Oh, cur- currently, Witsins has a vendor, they actually have a program developing menus. With a nutritionist, what we're going to do is, with her experience and, and her nutritional background, she will be developing menus so that specific for our needs in our district. And Witsins was asked to go to hire a nutritionist last year, which we would take from the food service account anyway, but I prefer to allow and, and have someone that we selected so that we can direct the menus and our choices. And in addition to the menus and, and the program itself, we could help with the wellness committee and overall, you know, and, and the other initiatives that we have in the district. So again, she'll also be serving our wellness committee as well.
Um, if I, if I understand you correctly, and, and this gets into, like, the, I, I personally feel like the food services fund and the cafeteria fund sometimes is a source of confusion, and it, it's weird how it works. But if Witsins was going, are you saying if Witsins was going to go and hire a nutritionist anyway to do this type of work for Witsins for us, that they, they could then hire whoever they want, and it'd be billed to us anyway?
Correct, that's correct.
So if they were gonna hire a nutritionist, they would hire a nutritionist for every district that they do business with, or one, or like one or two nutritionists?
Well, he, he, here's, one of the concerns was that they could technically hire a nutritionist, we would pay for it, and then they would use, you know, their services for other districts. So that's not something that I wanted to, you know, I was trying to avoid that. And also, having a nutritionist, you know, on, on our side, on our team, we could use her to help us assist with managing the food service account and making sure that, well, you know, we follow all the federal guidelines, so basically, she, she's more than, than, you know, developing menus, she's gonna be helping us just move forward with the account and the possible, possible construction of the warehouse or the central kitchen, so there's gonna be a lot of back and forth in the state, so she would be that liaison for us.
Okay. Further questions, discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, one opposed? All right, next.
Sorry, I lost my little document. Sorry.
Had to use.
There we go. It's E?
Yep.
Approve purchase order and bid waiver for disinfectant wipes in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand, nine seventy. Any second?
Second.
Second, oh, sorry. Lot of money. Didn't we just do?
We talked about it in the finance committee, so.
Okay, it was in the committee, okay, sorry, I thought we did it on the last meeting. Yeah, because before they were making their own, these, their line, is that it? Yeah, 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 I'm mixing, mixing meetings, okay.
Another load of disinfectant wipes.
Is that just a one-year supply? That's a one-month supply.
Okay, so any discussion about a mother load of disinfectant wipes? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I understand that superintendent wanted to pull item F. Is that correct?
Motion to postpone indefinitely item seven F.
Second.
Next. Okay, all in favor of that indefinite tabling?
Aye.
Aye.
Item G, approve purchase order bid waiver and contract by and between Navigate Three Sixty LLC and New Burton Public Schools for Navigate Three Sixty Safety Suite in the amount of one hundred and twenty-six thousand, thirty-six cents.
Second.
All right. What is this, Matt? Yeah.
Yes.
I know, don't be afraid, I'm sorry.
I'm used, I'm used to you, it's all good.
Apologize.
I'm from Little League baseball, not from here. So this is basically Alice, Navigate, Walt Alice, so Navigate is now the company for this. This one hundred and twenty-six thousand is a three-year contract, and we are able to save a few tens of thousands of dollars doing the three-year contract. It would start in July, we're getting it now to save even more money on it. And the reason being, we want to start it in July is because we're in the remote hybrid models now, so it's not really worth it to deploy this into the schools with just a few months left. You would get quite a few things with this package, one, trainings for all new and returning staff, self-directed trainings for Alice, and that's something we've struggled with here, we had recorded videos of us presenting, and they weren't getting the whole thing. As I've been evaluating all the safety stuff since taking this position, I've been talking with the Department of Homeland Security, and they've kind of noted to me that the templates we were using for our safety planes in the schools weren't in full compliance. Tom Hallett was working on fixing that before I came back, and so I've been working with the regional manager here. And, but Alice, the Navigate Three Sixty suite, presents all of the compliance plans for us into the software, so all the principal needs to do, or the school emergency team, goes into the software, plugs in their information, and then it uploads to the cloud, and then we send to the state. So all this extra work that we were doing on our end, filling in all these handmade templates, will be gone. Further, one of the things I like most about this is, God forbid, if we have a school emergency, and the students and the teachers have to go to a rally point, and parents have to come pick their children up from this rally point, teachers, staff, and everyone else with the software can interact in real time, so if a student gets picked up by the parent, they put it into the system, from their phone, their tablet, or their Chromebook, and it distributes to all the other staff. So Johnny's over here, and Peter's all the way over there, and Johnny's parent comes here, but Peter's their brother or something, let's say, the staff member says Johnny's been picked up, everyone gets that information all at the same time. And then, if, if there's an emergency in the school, central office admin team can log into the cloud, see what's going on in real time, interact with the school emergency response team in real time. The school emergency response team itself can interact in real time, regardless of where they are in the building. And then all the teachers and other staff can interact with each other in real time as well. And it's all, again, cloud-based tablet, phone browser, so you don't have to worry about phones, or calling phones, I should say, and any of that, it takes all of that away from there. Besides that, you have pretty much other stuff in there as well, but those are the main features that I want to highlight from that, that I think will just make everything more cohesive across the district and more standardized, rather than each school kind of mashing together their own template.
Good job.
I want to say this is something that they're in the process of slowly rolling out in Windsor, and I thought, I think it's a really good system if we implement it. And that's one thing that I, knowing that that's behind this, that I, I believe it'll get implemented. But realistically, this especially, even for things like fire drills and other safety drills, being able for teachers, et cetera, to just instantly respond from either their phone or any other device they have, a school, a classroom tablet or Chromebook, when they're in the building, outside the building, it just is, it's relatively easy to use, and it just makes that recording so much easier, because I, so many times, just the, just this basic fire drill and the amount of chaos and confusion, and just, it doesn't have to be that complicated. So I, I, I think this is a, in terms of the size of our district, I think this is a good investment for our safety.
And the, and the point two would be during these three years, to evaluate what we can maybe do in-house after that, so can we create systems, you know, with MINS to replicate what's in the system, so we're not paying one hundred and twenty-eight thousand every three years, and that's really the kind of goal here, to evaluate this.
Okay.
So I heard you say their safety plans, they can do themselves now?
They have been doing it themselves, but we've been putting together templates.
Yeah.
Right, and not fully compliant with the regulations from the Department of Homeland Security. The Alice saw Navigate Three Sixty software, pulls it straight from the Department of Homeland Security, puts it into the cloud for the admins at the schools to, to create and upload, and then automatically, basically, you're in full compliance right after it's done, as long as everything's done. Here, we have to do it, I have to put them together, send them off to the Department of Homeland Security, they have to approve the templates, some school misses this, some school misses that, we have to bring it back, and it's just a longer process, this will make everything more efficient and standardized, I should say, as well. And emergency, first responders will have access to this as well. So when they're coming to the schools, they'll be able to log into the system, we'll have, give them their information to log in, they'll be able to access all the information right away too.
Okay, good, yeah.
The past Alice training that we used, I thought when we purchased it, it was for use ongoing. Without pulling up the contract from three years ago, I think we did the Alice training, when we purchased all of the software and everything, and all the training videos, like, did those just, that was just money thrown away?
I can't speak to that, unfortunately, I'm not sure.
Was it that training versus?
Training and material, like, I thought we purchased all of it.
I want to say that might have been just the training stuff, and it was good for certain model licenses. This package is a broader thing, and it has unlimited licenses.
Yes, Matt, you're correct, it was for a license, just somebody's on this call as well, and he was involved with that as well. It was for, it was for licenses per person.
Okay.
In addition to the training.
Yes, that's correct, and we made a video of the major presentation that we shared through the safety portal.
Thank you. Thank you, I wasn't sure, like, I thought we, like, we were doubling up on something that we already bought.
Yeah, I think those licenses kind of been used.
Okay, yep.
Okay, any further questions on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, next one.
Oh, Lord. Approve purchase order and bid waiver for flooring, furniture, and technology updates for the facilities department in the amount of one hundred and one thousand, five twenty.
for the facilities department in the amount of one hundred and one thousand five twenty, five hundred and twenty dollars and eighteen cents.
Second.
Okay.
Getting me now, Mr. Dian, Director of Facilities. I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Smedley in a minute. He'll give you a more detailed presentation of what we're doing. We'll say the two of these larger items, as you see on that list, the flooring, we bid out, so we have the three bids. We have the lowest bid we're showing you, what we want to do with the flooring. And when it comes to the furniture, the furniture is under state contract, that's a DAF bid out state contract. So we've already, that has already gone out to bid. I will say the gate building was renovated in two thousand and two. Gate building, for those who don't know, is two seventy-two Main Street. It's where Board of Ed has their administrative offices, forty-nine thousand square feet. One of the first things I noticed is that it has carpet, which is a mere quality issue. It is something, we have almost twenty years, no one has updated that building, and it's starting to update. So, Mr. Smedley, if you'd like to present and tell what we're trying to accomplish and why we're trying to accomplish this.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm gonna present my PowerPoint presentation. Can somebody in the room just let me know when you can see it on the screen?
Yeah, we can see it.
Okay, great. So the gate building, as Mr. Dian mentioned, was renovated in two thousand and two and has collected some furniture and materials since then. And, give me just a second, I gotta get, sorry, I gotta switch the slides, sorry. There we go, okay. So, Mr. Dian instructed me to look at a modernization and a remodel of our office space. And I took a clean, minimalistic approach to creating a flexible workspace that we could all work in. The facilities department is a service organization that consists of our custodians, maintenance, security, and support staff who work in our office here, dedicated to the success of our district, faculty, staff, and students. Our current office space on the fourth floor of two seventy-two Main Street was last renovated in two thousand and two, as we said. When we moved from Liberty Square to this facility, the space we occupied consisted of forty large lateral file cabinets, which had files from before I was actually born, we found a file cabinet dated nineteen eighty-four. And there's three cubicle workstations that you can see in the picture on the screen there.
Mr. Smedley? Could you actually, could you actually present the PowerPoint? Because we're staring at, we're staring at MS, yeah, actually presenting.
Wait one second, hold on, I'm sorry.
No problem.
I can swap that. I'm gonna stop the presentation for one second. Sorry about that.
Not a problem.
Let me know when it pops up there.
There we go, thank you.
Sorry about that, okay. So our office there, as you can see, has three cubicle spaces on the left and the file cabinet is down the center. And there was some original furniture over on the back right from what used to be called the Hill, the original Board of Ed building in the city. Around the corner, we have a space for our custodial managers, which is partially shared with some of the academic department. And you can see, it's just cumbersome, the environment appears messy and it appears dysfunctional. The skywalk, which will be included in this project, is the bridge that connects the city hall to the Board of Ed building. And it's the main entry for all staff every day and the way they exit to their vehicles at the end of the day. Currently, the space, as you can see in the picture, has worn carpet from the constant foot traffic, some dated wallpaper, and there's still some cosmetic damage from water damage that occurred a couple of years ago when I was cleaning pipers in that space. Our workspace, which is where myself, Helen Talalai, and Randy Broshu sit, has weathered and stained carpets. While they are cleaned every day, the carpet has very much passed its life expectancy and wear and tear is very visible. There's pilling of the carpet, there's tears, and you can see the discoloration in that picture. Again, my vision was minimalistic, functional, flexible, and clean. We are the hub for all things clean, logistic-wise, and problem-solving. So we wanted to create a space that would be inspirational, clean, flexible, so we could adapt to the daily needs of what's going on. So if you take a look at some of the diagrams I have on the left, or the diagram I have on the left of the screen there, it's a 3D rendering, and you'll see a better version of it in just a second. But I want to talk about the amount of work that our department does do. And the graph that's on the screen is the work order totals. In July, there was a total of seventy-six work orders submitted, seventy-three were closed out. August, forty-one submitted, thirty-three were closed out. September, we spiked because school opened, one hundred and thirty-two were submitted and one hundred and twenty-three were closed out. In October, seventy-nine submitted, sixty-two were closed out. And November, forty-two submitted and thirty-two closed out. And the point of this is to explain that it takes a team to accomplish that much work, to close out that many work orders on a monthly basis. And we need the space and the ability to work as a team to do just that. The big clean occurred, I immediately moved thirty-one of those file cabinets down to a storage area that we have available. And if you have walked through our space recently, you will see the major difference. We can actually breathe up here now. Our painter came in and removed the comb base and applied some new paint to our walls. We went a modern gray color. And any antiquated technology or dated items, furniture, we either put in the free sub-corner outside the elevator or we recycled it appropriately. The design process, as I said, involves a couple 3D design concepts. And you'll see two on the screen here. We're looking to include four workstations in the main area, three for the staff who currently exist, plus an additional fourth for one of the management folks, custodial manager, security manager, who might stop into the office, or John Leoni, our maintenance supervisor, if they needed a desk space. In the center of the room, you see a flexible table that's movable and will allow for us to have department meetings there or presentations. And at the top of the screen, you'll see like a three-station set, some desks against the wall there. Those will be like our technology control area for our building automation and security system. The picture on your screen now on the left is an example of the vinyl flooring that we're gonna be replacing the carpet with, or that we would like to replace the carpet with. A lighter tone gray is what we're looking at going with. And on the right is an example of some of the furniture that's included in our package. Just some more furniture pictures showing the different color and desk configurations that will be available. This is the actual 3D rendering that, or excuse me, the line drawing rendering that we settled on. So you can see, I'll start at the bottom left of your screen, there's four workstations in the L shape. Those would be Randy Broshu, Helen Talalai, myself, and the additional workspace that we talked about. At the center of the room is our flexible table. Off to the right is a seating area that can also be used as a meeting area. And then at the top, where you see the handicap symbol, in the middle there, those are three workstations for our security, HVAC, and building automation systems. Here's an actual 3D rendering of what the space would look like. The colors are not, not solid yet. We're not gonna have the green, that's just what they put there to differentiate the furniture for us. But here's an idea of what it would look like. And you can see, there are dividers between each workspace that extend out from the window wall. And we intend on creating a separate space, separate from the elevator with that wall in front of the seating area that you see at the bottom of the screen as well. I created this idea of workspace with synergy so that we could be flexible enough to diagnose what problems we have for the day or that we have on the table project-wise, and that we could mitigate those issues and move forward. The furniture is all completely ADA accessible, the desks are what are called toggle desks. They raise and lower, so if an employee wanted to stand and work, they could do so, or if they wanted to remain seated. And as you can see, it's all clean-lined, sleek-looking, modern furniture. The budget for our project had three different parts to it, the wall, the floor, the lighting, the furniture, and then the technology. As mentioned, we've already completed, ninety percent wise, completed painting the walls in-house with our own painter. The flooring, we're looking at a durable vinyl plank that will extend from that skywalk straight through the entire office space, our print room and conference room. The wall system is from, excuse me, from a company, BCI Contractors, who is on the state list as well. And that includes the desks, chairs, the workspace tables, and any storage cabinets that were included in the project. The technology aspect is the monitoring systems that we talked about. This will be the control system and the AV system that runs, combining those three or four computers for those systems onto displays that we have here in facilities already. And then lighting, we actually own the lighting fixtures already. It's just gonna be our in-house electricians or contractor for labor to install the new lighting fixtures. And of course, they are LED panels. This was my original timeline, and then Christmas happened and we had to get on this agenda for tonight. So I do plan on taking an aggressive approach to completion of this project if it is approved tonight. But that has been our timeline since the start of November. I was also asked in this project by Mr. Kane and Mr. Dian to include what a future cubicle workspace would look like if other departments wanted to model their workspace after ours. And I'm aware that each department has established practices and built a culture on their floor. And I think the old-style cubicles can be replaced with this new workspace system that I'm proposing for facilities. And a rough cost of the layout you see on the screen now would be about six thousand seven hundred dollars per cubicle. Now, you can get two people in there for a little bit less because you're essentially just extending a desk space to be a secondary counter, but there's flexibility in that sense. And they can be moved down the road much more easier than the current cubicle setups we have at this point. In order to demo the desk that we sit at now, we actually have to have a contractor here to take it apart, remove the electricity, et cetera, et cetera. So that would be eliminated with the new workspace system. Mr. Dian explained that we did bid out the flooring replacement. We actually had four quotes for that. The lowest responsible bidder for the project was Valley Flooring. The furniture and the walls are from BCI, they are on the state-approved list, electrical lighting. I'm estimating at about four thousand dollars, also haven't done for labor to do that, but that can be done in-house. And the technology is the other approval that we're looking for tonight for the AV control system. This screen shows you the three contracts that we're looking for approval for. Valley Flooring for twenty-three nine eighty-three, BCI for fifty-five one oh seven, which includes the furniture, the wall dividing system, labor and install of all the furniture. And then, of course, as I mentioned, CMI Sound quote for the AV system. Are there any questions?
So if I'm understanding the presentation, then the only thing that wasn't either on state lists or put out to bid that would be over that threshold, that seven-five-hundred threshold, is the CMI sound systems. Is there a reason that that wasn't bid, or was it?
You are correct, I'm sorry, is this Mr. Mercier, I'm sorry?
Yes, sorry.
Yes, you are correct. And to be honest with you, I received that quote over the break. I didn't get the quote in time, and this was the only quote that I had. I'm looking to install proprietary, it's called Athlon, video management system here. And CMI Sound is the only local vendor that provides that brand-new equipment.
Okay, thank you.
Questions? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Gail, okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay. And we're on to the next one.
Approved budget transfers in the amount of three hundred and forty-six thousand seven hundred and forty-seven dollars. And I believe some of it is for the, I was gonna say Alice training, but that's not it, the Navigate 360, right? The facilities improvements? Oh, yep, sorry, 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 sorry.
Do you wanna?
Yeah, I apologize, I didn't bring my memo with me tonight. These are, the transfers in front, I think there's a description next to it for three forty-six, what the pieces are. You know, we've talked before about, you know, we do know our medical self-insurance fund, I think we, there's been some discussion, does, you know, have a surplus in it. We're not taking it from that fund, of course, but the recommendation, we do have funds available this year. We're gonna transfer a line item to the needed areas, so that's what you're seeing there. I'm just keeping count of it.
All right, so any further questions or discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Gail opposed, all right.
I can't vote yes for something I voted no for, I can't put the money there if I didn't vote for it, right?
The next one, personnel. Now, we have, yeah, okay, we've done budget transfers, now we need to do the fiscal report, Jay.
Yep, sorry. I don't know how to quickly get back home.
Motion to accept the financial report for November twenty twenty?
Okay, we have a second motion, Kevin, you wanna?
I was gonna say, this is the standard report, I believe.
This is monthly.
All right.
Right, this is the year-end, this is your monthly.
If you had a finance committee, you would have went in front of it.
Yeah. It would have been on a consent.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sorry.
So any questions about this? Nope, seeing no questions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, so the next one is the superintendent's year-end evaluation. Mr. Mercier put together a...
So the evaluation was a summation of sort of the notes from our meeting. I sent it out to board members, I didn't get any feedback for things to change. Technically, the next step in the process, though, is we're supposed to meet with the superintendent and have an executive session to discuss before we vote on anything final. And I'm not sure how the board is feeling about doing that at the moment, but that would be the next step in the process, is to meet an executive session with the superintendent to review.
So would you think a special, sorry? Would you think a special meeting or a next, like, February, is that too? Because I'm, I'm just gonna say, I'm gonna assume, like, you can't really talk about L until you talk about K, yeah.
I would, I would like to make a motion to postpone items K and L and ask for the chair of the board to call a special meeting sometime in the next two weeks so that we can handle those items on their own in a special meeting. They'd be the only two business items, and then that way, it's minimal staff sitting around waiting.
Yeah, okay, so, yeah.
So I'd make a motion to postpone items K and L to a future special meeting to be called by Mr. Yay in the next two weeks.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.